Good evening and welcome to this, the June twenty-fourth meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Entos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Kik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carling.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
Here. If you'll please join me in the Pudge of Allegiance.
Pudge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Proclaimations. We've got proclamation declaring July twenty-eighth through August fourth as Play Ball Week. And I've got a proclamation for Kathleen Minzer. And I see Bill Boomer out in the audience as well. So this is, whereas the sport of baseball, known affectionately as America's national pastime, has played a significant role in the cultural and social fabric of the United States for well over a century, bringing together people of all ages and backgrounds in a shared love of the game. And whereas the United States Conference of Mayors and Major League Baseball have collaborated to establish June through August as Play Ball Summer. A season dedicated to promoting the joys and benefits of baseball and softball across communities nationwide. And whereas Play Ball Summer aims to encourage families, friends, and neighbors to come together and actively participate in the game of baseball, fostering a spirit of unity and engagement that extends beyond the ballpark. And whereas the city of Livermore is honored to host the prestigious Little League Intermediate Fifty-Seventy World Baseball World Series, a thrilling and highly competitive youth baseball tournament that showcases the talents of players aged eleven to thirteen from around the world. And whereas this remarkable event brings together the best Little League Fifty-Seventy Division baseball teams from various countries, making Livermore a global stage for what is now celebrated as the world's pastime. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore hereby proclaims July twenty-eighth through August fourth as Play Ball Week in Livermore and welcomes the participants, organizers, and fans to the twenty-twenty-four Little League Intermediate Fifty-Seventy World Series. And by the way, Major League Baseball was founded in eighteen sixty-nine, the same year that Livermore was. So naturally, all come together.
Pretty cool.
Well, Mayor and councilmember staff, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the proclamation. I just want to say, we have a couple things exciting news is the host team this year that just won last Thursday night is Livermore Little League. So we have our host team represented by our own town, which will be pretty cool. Second time it's happened since we've had the tournament going since two thousand and thirteen. So look for your emails soon because I'm gonna be circling that around so you can come out and throw out a first pitch for me. Looking for National Anthem Singers as always. And I just love the support we get from the city and the community. It's a great event and we're happy to be here. Bill, do you want to add anything?
No, I just want to echo what Kathleen said. The city's been very supportive since the inception in two thousand and thirteen. We've really grown this event to where now it's, you know, we're getting anywhere from forty to fifty thousand spectators for the whole week. It's grown quite a bit on ESPN right now and we're always adding some features. So this year, we're hoping to have, we're gonna have a Jumbotron feature out there this year. So it's gonna be pretty cool. So come on out. We love having you guys out.
So this is the eleventh year? Yes, it's two thousand and thirteen?
Yeah, we had two years no tournament for COVID.
Yeah.
This is our eleventh actual tournament.
But I gotta hand it to you, to all of you, the work that you have done out at that field has just been extraordinary. And seeing you working behind the grill, this is an awesome, awesome event and it brings the community together. So thank you for bringing all this and for Dave bringing all this to Livermore. So that's a tremendous effort, a big lift, and thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to. I'd like to offer my thanks as well. I've had my grandson throw out the first pitch several years, four several years. And I think Kathleen would be surprised how tall he's gotten since the first time he came out. I'm wearing my Little League hat, so I know you're gonna be here tonight. So again, congratulations to you guys for being such hard workers, both getting the field in shape but also just doing whatever needs to be done to bring those teams here to celebrate baseball in this community. So again, I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to reorder the agenda. There's a few things tonight that we really need to get done. And so the things that we need to get done, we'll get done first. So I'm going to move the consent calendar until after the matters for consideration.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you were gonna move open forum?
Pardon me?
You said the consent calendar.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm sorry. We're gonna move the open forum until after the matters for consideration. Okay, all right. Sorry about that. Okay, so moving the open forum to after matters for consideration. That means we move to the consent calendar. Consent calendars typically items that are routine in nature and are passed with a single motion. Is there anybody that wishes to pull anything for consent? Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on consent?
No, no public comment's been received.
Okay, they're, are we going to close the public comment period on consent calendar? Is there a motion for the consent?
I'll move consent.
A second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? They pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to the public hearing for six point one, hearing to receive and consider all evidence and reports regarding the adoption of a master fee schedule.
Honorable Mayor Marshon and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marasheva. Item six point one will be presented by finance manager Eric Peterson. Mr. Peterson?
Meeting Mayor and City Council. I am Eric Peterson, your finance manager. Tonight, I'm presenting the city's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five master fee schedule. The master fee schedule is a single document where all fees for city services and activities are located. This schedule does not include development impact fees, landscape maintenance district assessments, or franchise fees. It's a best practice to annually review and update the master fee schedule. Most fees are adjusted by CPI. This year, it's two point four percent. These fees recover the actual costs of providing services that were established through a formal study and reviewed annually. The master fee schedule includes fees previously approved by council and deletes fees no longer being used and/or not applicable. Tonight, I'm focusing on the proposed new and modified fees. We are proposing to add four new fees to the master fee schedule. The first fee before you are special event fees. These fees recover the costs associated with issuing special event permits. The cost of the fee is either fifty dollars for nonprofit organizations or a hundred and sixty dollars for a for-profit organization, which includes printed no parking signs. The second fee is the four-three-three A recordation fee, which is required by state law. The cost is twenty-two dollars, of which eleven dollars goes to the state and eleven goes to the city to recover the city clerk's recording costs. This fee applies when a building permit is issued to attach a pre-manufactured home or mobile home permanently to a foundation. The third group of new fees is part of the building division as well. We are setting fees in the mechanical, plumbing, and electrical section as individual permits rather than combined into one category. This increases the efficiency when issuing these permits. The airport is adding conference room rental and related fees to the master fee schedule. These are existing fees that have only been listed on the meeting room use conditions application. Fire miscellaneous administrative fees are the last proposed fee modification. These fees will recover costs related to hazmat incidents and events that require a paramedic to be on standby. A good example of this would be the rodeo. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution adopting the city's master fee schedule incorporating certain fee changes and superseding resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash one twenty-eight. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, do we have a public comment?
No public comment's been received.
Okay, we need to close the public comment then and bring it back to the council. Any questions? Question? Okay, I got some. So my favorite, I think, is the airship mooring fee, but that's, that's a buck a foot. Or the.
Right.
At first, I thought, when I first glanced through it, it was like a dollar. It's like, really? But no, it's a buck a foot. Okay. For the fire prevention fees, and to reiterate your point, this is a recovery in costs for the city. We're not making money on this. This is just to recover our costs.
That's correct.
So with that, for the fire prevention fees, the battalion chief's actual time costs are billed at. There was a hundred and thirteen dollars for five point one-one. That was in the, in the consent. But the police officers billed for two hundred an hour. But the. You know, so for the fire prevention fees, it's a hundred and thirteen for the battalion chief. But for item five-one-one, the lieutenant is billed at three hundred and seven dollars an hour and the police officers are billed at two hundred. Why the disparity?
So there's a little bit of disparity in there as the, they are both fully burdened rates, but the police includes an overhead fee and the fire does not. So in order to get that overhead fee, LPFD, Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department, would actually have to do a, have their own fee study on the indirect costs that, that they have in order to recover them.
Okay, also, is there an hour difference, different numbers of hours?
Yes, that's correct. The number of hours for police is billed on a two thousand and eighty-hour year, whereas fire is billed on a twenty-nine-twelve hour.
Oh, okay. So it, that's what reduces, reduces the hour rate by almost a third then?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, great. And that's, okay, that's what I've got. So we've got a. Yeah, so any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move staff's recommendation.
A second.
Okay, once again, moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposition? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Six point two, this is a hearing to receive and consider. Six point two, this is a hearing to, on the police department tow franchise proposals.
Honorable Mayor Marshon and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Marasheva. Public hearing six point two will be presented by our police department, including police chief Jeremy Young and police captain John Raylands. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I am Captain Reynolds and beside me is Chief Young. We are here tonight to present the police department's recommendation for the new tow franchise agreement. The current tow franchise agreement went into effect in two thousand and eighteen. It was extended twice and will expire on June thirtieth of this year. There are five franchisees as part of the agreement who are utilized on a rotational tow basis. Since the two thousand and eighteen agreements have been in effect, the police department has experienced the need for an increased level of towing services from our franchisees, specifically for items larger than fifteen feet, such as recreational vehicles and boats. Community concerns related to RVs and boats continue to be fielded, resulting in the need for the police department to proactively address the concerns before they multiply. The police department remains committed to the beautification of the city and responsive to its needs. Under the current agreement, there are only three of the five franchisees on rotation own medium and heavy-duty class levels of tow trucks capable of non-consensual tow, towing of those larger items. The cost for a franchisee to properly dispose and dismantle an RV or boat are significant due to the disposal of hazardous waste, hazardous waste materials such as fuels, engine fluids, human waste, and other environmental factors. In planning for this RFP and Q process, staff has learned that area tow company costs for proper disposal and dismantling of these items have ranged anywhere from three thousand dollars on the low end to as much as fifteen thousand dollars. Therefore, the three franchisees who have the capability to tow these RVs and boats with their heavier duty tow trucks incur higher expenses than those franchisees who do not. This has created inequities amongst the current franchisees. Livermore Municipal Code five point four-four titled Police Tow Service Franchises established towing regulations to govern non-consensual police towing services for the Livermore Police Department. A request for proposals and qualifications was announced on March twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-four and closed on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. While the RFP and Q was open, staff hosted an informational meeting for interested tow operators. Nine tow companies attended the meeting and a public hearing notice was also published as part of this process on June twelfth. To satisfy the growing needs for the police department and the city, the RFP and Q included two noteworthy changes compared to the soon-to-expire two thousand and eighteen agreement. The first change is the requirement for franchisees to have one medium-duty tow truck, known as a Class B truck, and one heavier-duty tow truck, either a Class C or Class D. In addition to any number of Class A tow trucks, which are typically used for everyday vehicles such as your cars, SUVs, and trucks. Tow truck classes are mainly classified based on gross vehicle weight capabilities. Thus, the heavier and larger the item to be towed, the higher level of tow truck classification is needed. This requirement ensures each franchisee can provide the same level of service to the police department when summoned for a non-consensual tow and the capability to tow any RV or boat over fifteen feet. The second noteworthy change of the RFP and Q includes up to a twenty-five-hundred-dollar reimbursement for franchisees' costs of properly dismantling and disposing of RVs and boats. The twenty-five-hundred-dollar reimbursement is an incentive to franchisees to help offset exorbitant costs rather than refusing the tow request. Not every RV or boat towed is dismantled or disposed, as some are claimed and returned to their registered owners. It should be noted that under the current two thousand and eighteen agreements and the recommended agreement before you tonight, participation into the tow rotation program is voluntary and each franchisee shall provide towing and storage services regardless of the value of the vehicles to be towed and stored. This includes collisions, DUI tows, abandoned vehicle abatement, and all other calls for service by the police department. Five tow companies submitted proposals under RFP and Q number four-two-six-two. Those tow companies are Jack James Tow Service, Central Towing and Transport, First Street Tow, Golden State Fleet Service, and Norm's Tow Service. Three of the five companies are current franchisees and all companies met the RFP and Q requirements. In conclusion, staff recommends that pursuant to Municipal Code five point four-four, the city council grant non-exclusive franchise agreements to the five tow companies who submitted proposals under RFP and Q four-two-six-two. Each agreement is for a five-year term commencing July first of two thousand and twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine. And lastly, grant authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement and future amendments to the agreements. And staff is available for any questions.
Okay, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is, make sure I pronounce it right, Jeff Rockteschler, followed by Jeff Palowski, followed by Suzie Palowski.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for giving me a three minutes. I have towed in the city of Livermore since nineteen ninety-three, which is about thirty-one years. I did it exclusively for the city of Livermore and for the Livermore Police Department from ninety-three until two thousand and eight, of which they changed it and went to the franchise thing. And now, because of the new tow franchise thing requiring medium and heavy duty, which I provided them for fifteen years before this, I'm excluded from the franchise. I don't, I don't think that's right. I think it's a kind of a violation of my rights to serve the community. I've been doing it for thirty-two years here and it absolutely disgusts me that this has happened. I feel betrayed by the city, who I'm a taxpayer, both homeowner and commercial property here. And it's, I had five weeks to come up with a million dollars worth of equipment. There was no pre-notice, no anything given to me before the five weeks before the franchise thing was due. You can't buy a tow truck in thirty days. Right now, it takes a year to get a regular, a regular flatbed tow truck. Takes one year. Ask any of the drivers out there, any of the owners out there, they'll tell you. So I wasn't afforded the opportunity to stay on this rotation because of that. So I'm asking, my letter to the city and my letter to the Livermore Police Department was not responded to. If you have that letter in front of you, I gave it to you. Please take a look at it. I, I just think it's, it's wrong. And my level of service to this community has been next to none. I provided vehicles, trucks, bodies for every fifteen minutes programs for fifteen years here. And because somebody decided they, they feel that they need motorhomes and big rigs towed, they did eight big rig toes the last year, two thousand and twenty-three, eight. That's not even one per, that's not even two per company. I did it for fifteen years by myself. And I just think it's, it's absolutely a travesty that this happened. I mean, I think it, it should be reviewed. People should take a look at it. I'm not the only one that's gonna stand up here and tell you this. But it just disgusts me as a taxpayer in this city to be turned away and not have any opportunity to continue the service that my family has provided in this valley for thirty-two years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Palowski, followed by Suzie Palowski, followed by Alan Sero.
Hi, my name is Jeff Palowski. I own Allen's Automotive and Towing. I started towing for the city of Livermore in nineteen eighty-one. It's forty-three years ago. I also feel the same as a lot of these comments you already heard. We were given exactly like maybe three weeks, four weeks to comply or sorry, you don't qualify. You know, and it's not right to do it that way. If, if somebody knew about this change, they should have called a meeting with all the tow companies and discussed it and come up with a viable solution for everybody, not put people out of business or try to. I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Suzie Palowski, followed by Alan Sero.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I requested a meeting with the police chief and the city manager to, they've dismissed my request for a meeting. I wanted to talk to them about how unreasonable it is to ask our company, Allen's Automotive and Towing, to give us a five-week notice to come up with a million dollars worth of equipment. I have no choice but to seek legal counsel. I've been set up to fail. I believe that the Livermore is in desperate need of a towing advisory board for the betterment of the city of Livermore and the tow companies serving the city of Livermore. The impact including towing industry experts would ensure comprehensive understanding and effective decision-making. The board could serve as an open forum for discussion regarding current towing challenges or towing-related issues the Livermore Police Department or tow companies are facing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Palowski, could you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry, want to make sure we capture everything.
The participation of the police chief would be crucial in providing insight and communication for future changes or demands being placed upon the tow companies. Establishing a towing advisory board would only bring more transparency, transparency, and accountability and fairness to the towing franchise process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Sero.
City council and staff, my name is Alan Sero. I'm a local business owner. I'm also the current president of Tri Valley Seek and Say, which is a nonprofit organization here in Livermore that helps marginalized families. And we've worked over the last four years extensively with Allen's Towing and really feel that they are an essential part of our work and, and very instrumental to bringing necessary assistance to, to women and families that can't always afford towing. So they've worked hand-in-hand with us on a variety of fronts to bring assistance to the area. And we feel that it's reasonable to take a little more time to, to review the RFP and maybe look at some other ways that you could include others. And again, the, the time period being so short to acquire that equipment seems a bit unreasonable. So I would, I would, I would ask that you consider to delaying that, that process and having staff take a further look at it. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, in that case, we're going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Questions by the council? Councilmember Branning?
Yeah, so I want to thank the speakers today. And this has actually been, I've been out of town for the last couple of weeks. Spent quite a bit of time talking with staff, talking with concerned parties about this. Normally, I try to make sure I can sort out as much as possible with staff beforehand, but I actually have some questions that I don't know the answer to ahead of time. So I want to ask staff, first of all, given the amount of time that the RFP was out for and the change in requirements, was there any notification given to tow companies that there was going to be a costly change to the requirements before the RFP was sent out to the current, current franchisees? No, there was not. Okay, um, and then from what I've heard from some of the current franchisees, is it reasonable to expect that they would be able to meet the current requirements in the timeframe that we had? Or is there an option for them to meet those requirements in the contract going forward? In other words, could they acquire a, well, I'll break it down. Could they acquire a flatbed truck of, I think it's, I forget the classes right now, but a heavy-duty flatbed truck in the five weeks the RFP was opened?
I don't know what the timeframe is to acquire the equipment. But we did have the public meetings and we didn't get an indication that, that some of them were going to try to purchase the equipment.
Okay, um, given that it's a five-year contract, if one of the current franchisees did want to, you know, meet the requirements of had a heavy-duty truck, getting, you know, getting the ability to actually do this during the five years, would they be able to enter into this rotation during the five years?
I'd have to defer to the attorney to see if we could make that happen. I don't know if we can add in the, after the first year, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, stays. If a, if a franchise, a current franchisee or future franchisee wished to get into this during the five-year process, would that be an option?
We have to review the city's ordinance to see what it had to say about this. If it required it all at one time, then yes, there may be a preclusion, but you would have the opportunity as the city council to revisit that. Otherwise, if there's no sub-provision in the ordinance that says that you must start on one date and it's a five-year exclusive, then you'd have a chance, but I don't believe this is an exclusive franchise, is it?
There's no exclusive.
So we would have to look at the ordinance to see what opportunities it provides.
Okay. Then kind of where I'm at right now is, from what I've heard from the franchisees, is the current RFP that went out provided them with no opportunity to have time to react to the changes. As such, it seems like it's something that really is hurting some of the small businesses in our community. I'm, I've been going back and forth with this in my conversations with staff. I know I've had, you know, a number of conversations. And so this has been pretty difficult for me to come to any sort of conclusion on. As it is right now, I don't think I can support the current contract that we have in front of us. I would ask that we come back with something that does provide, you know, in consultation with some of our current providers, what, what it would take to be able to continue to support current providers as well as make sure that we're meeting all of the city's service needs. Our conversations included that, you know, we do have an increased need. And so for the providers that we have currently, I know that what we've been doing has been working well for you, but things are changing and we will have new requirements going forward. You might have to change your business practices to meet those, and maybe you can, maybe you can't. I don't think we can, you know, I don't think there should be any preference given for current franchisees. But I think they should have the opportunity in the five-week period to react. I don't believe gave them that opportunity. So unless I hear something else from the dais right now, I would be in opposition to this as it is.
Comments?
Yeah. Um, based on it being a five-year term, would it, and, and based on the comments, commentary that I heard that it would take about a year to get equipment, is it possible to break these up into smaller pieces to provide opportunity for within one year, someone else may enter the rotation, within a second year, someone else may enter the rotation? What I disagree with my colleague about is that waiting it out is just a use of staff time that I don't think is productive. We need to, we need to keep this agreement moving because things need to continue to be towed. So if there is a way to parse out where we agree to this for a one-year term and revisit, it could potentially provide the opportunity for those wishing to meet the new equipment requirements to participate. In general, however, we have to balance, uh, uh, as a decision-making body, what's best for one individual company, one individual industry versus the entire city as a whole. And remember that our city as a whole does include a limited staff capacity. And one of the notes that I heard is that it's staff capacity to manage rotations when someone has to drop off their rotations. I want to respect that. And that when we are using extra staff time and having to add staff people, that's also costing the city money. So if you believe that there is an opportunity to parse this out, to add an option within one year to enter, I would love to know if that is an option. Otherwise, I will defer to your judgment.
Through the mayor, if I may, this is your city manager, Mariana Mottershova. I would just offer a little bit of a perspective from staff. This contract was advertised for specific terms, including a five-year term. And, and of course, the companies signed up for this contract based on that term and based on the fees. It might be appropriate for us without consulting with staff ahead of time to sit down with the two vendors that did not participate and did not get the contract to understand what options are available. But in the meantime, move forward with the five-year contract as recommended by staff as an option for the city council to consider.
So to be clear, you're saying that we've moved forward with this five-year contract. Then we would schedule time to sit down with those who were not able to participate? Would that be a separate contract, or would that potentially be added into this five-year agreement?
Thank you, Councilmember Kik. What I would suggest, and again, sitting far away from, from my team and not being able to consult ahead of time, is with a respectful request that the city council approved the five-year contract as presented. In the meantime, staff will meet with the two companies that did not participate and were not selected and also consult with the city attorney on any options for the new companies to enter the contract. And we will get back to you with those recommendations.
Okay, I, I appreciate the opportunity to continue the conversation. And generally, having an, an attitude of, of flexibility. However, respecting our staff's time is something I think is a general practice we like to keep here. So thank you for that option. City attorney?
Oh, it appears to the council, I had an opportunity to peruse the ordinance online, and I did not see anything that precludes a subsequent RFP. They may have different requirements, but I think that would be for the police chief to evaluate what they could accommodate, what they couldn't. So I think there is an opportunity to have a further conversation about this.
Okay, I would just like to present to the people up here that, my, my fellow four, that we do have an option to move forward with what we have here while still opening dialogue with an option for a secondary RFP at a later date.
So I, I also struggled with this and because these are longtime established businesses, they've been doing business for decades. But there again, we also have a need in the city and our agreement expires in a week. So we're under time constraints because this need doesn't go away just while we're, we're figuring this out. And of course, it comes down to equity. And that's, you know, for example, it, I remember just, it wasn't that long ago. We had a couple of burned-out Hulk Winnebagoes in a couple of different parking lots. And we couldn't find anybody to tow it because it was probably going to cost about $15,000 to tow this burned-out Hulk. I'm getting emails from people saying, why aren't you doing anything? But we couldn't get anybody to, to pick this thing up because they were going to lose money on it. And so the, the big companies that have the tow trucks that can move this, the big class Ds, they're going to lose money when they, when they pick these things up. And the small tow companies don't have the equipment, so they can, they can pass and say, okay, we don't have the equipment, so we'll give this to somebody else that does. So that sort of pre-selects that the people that can do the, the heavy work, they're the ones that are going to lose money on these. So yeah, how do you spread out that loss? And this was, I think, some of the genesis behind the thinking that, well, everybody's going to share in that because everybody's going to have the same equipment. So nobody's going to be able to turn down a tow. Right now, the operators have an option to turn down a tow job, whether they don't have the equipment or whether they're going to lose money on it. This way, the new agreement, I understand, they can't turn it down. They have to pick it up. So in that rotation, is there a provision that if an operator doesn't have a class D truck, that they can, they can subcontract and then pay the, another tow operator to remove that?
That's not in the provision at this point.
Right.
And that would have been an additional administrative burden just to make sure that the lease agreements were in place and that were current at all times, so they could sublease to a, a company with a larger vehicle. And all of the companies who are on our current rotation are well aware of the challenges we've had over the past several years regarding the RVs and boats. And so to say that it's, it's completely a shock is surprising to me because we've struggled with this for some time to try to find an equitable way to remove these vehicles. Also keeping in mind that the community is really concerned about trying to move these in a timely manner. So this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone on the rotation that we've definitely had challenges trying to remove these in a timely manner.
I, I was there. I was getting the emails. So, uh, so yeah, but I just think, if, if, I was wondering if there was some mechanism to require them to subcontract with one of the other haulers, to require them to move it in a timely manner. They don't have the ability, but would be able to put into an agreement a requirement that they subcontract with another company.
It's theoretically possible, Your Honor. This is your city attorney, Jason Longhalla. I will refer you to section 5.44.130 in the municipal code, 5.44.130. That actually prohibits the assignment or transfer of a portion of the agreement. So we'd have to, we'd run afoul of that. So we'd have to find out what was the impetus for that language in the ordinance that precluded that and figure out whether there's an opportunity to adjust the ordinance. But right now, the haulers are not able to, the tow companies are not able to sublet or to assign a portion of that work to anybody else.
But we're in Livermore. Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Carl, Vice Mayor Carling?
Okay, thank you. Like my colleagues, I struggled with this as well. I reached out to the chief and the captain both, and they provided me a lot of information. I will admit that I really didn't, I had no clue as to how this worked. And I mean, one of the questions I have is, why is it five companies? Is that just an arbitrary number?
Five companies are who submitted proposals for this RFP? So in, in my tenure at the department, we've had one company, up to five, through the contract process.
Okay, but it's, so at this point, it's just arbitrary, right?
Correct. It could have been three, four, or five, but five put in and five qualified.
The other thing I guess I'd like to just to remark on is, I understand our Lance and Allen's, you know, build themselves as small companies, but I think the others are probably small companies as well with big equipment. So I don't know that we necessarily are singling out our Lance and Allen's because we believe they're small companies. It's just they don't have the equipment, and I am disappointed that they don't because I think they've served this community for a long time. I do think that we need to figure out a way to get them included in some fashion. Like I said, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Kik. I appreciate the challenge of this. I think at our last council meeting, Mr. Palowski said that 80% of the toes in Livermore are, are small class, guess, Class A, is that right? And I've tried to figure out, I mean, I have data here on the number of toes. And again, I appreciate them, and I'm just shocked at the number of toes we have in here in this community, not what are called non-consensual toes. It's like three a day in Livermore. And I don't know, it looks like we're gonna, in 2024, it looks like we'll exceed the 2023 total number. And I don't know what this ratio of small to large, how it's changed. I mean, I appreciate that the chief says there's more and more larger vehicles. And to the mayor's point, I'm well aware of the burned-out RV, and I understand the inequity that could, could be viewed amongst some of the bigger tow, or trying to deal with the disposition of an abandoned boat or an RV and so on. But I certainly would hope and expect that we'd try and figure out a way that we didn't include Allen's Towing and our Lance. And whether it's a year from now or something like that, as Councilmember Kik suggested, but that's, that's what I would like to see.
Good governance.
And last but not least, just quick math, these guys have took then 70 years of service to our community. And I, I don't want to turn our backs on them. I think we should wait a year and give them a chance to, to, to get the equipment they need to get. And then after that, they had the time, one year to get it. So I, I'd like to, you know, table it or come back later. Maybe we come up with something, a mixture of some of the ideas we got here. So, you know, I appreciate Allen and Lance for what they've done in the community. And I hope we can find a way to get them back in for the, all the work they've done beyond just towing.
Mayor.
Councilmember Kik?
Uh, so to be clear, the current contract expires next week?
In a week.
Okay, so I want, we have a whole lot more to talk about tonight. So I'm going to try and be efficient and make what I think is a reasonable motion. I move that we vote to agree with staff's recommendation for the current five-year tow franchise agreement. However, with a contingency that there will be a meeting held to inform those parties who wish to procure the equipment, not who wish to do something else and just get to participate to participate, but those who wish the opportunity to procure and participate, figure out how we will do that. What does that look like a second RF, RFP? Does it mean we reopen? I don't know how RFP opening and closing works. I'll leave that all to Jason and the police department to figure out. But that I believe it's appropriate for us to keep the towing franchise moving. Respect our staff's time so that we can keep this towing franchise moving, but also provide businesses who wished, who wish to evolve and adjust with the current needs to participate. And I believe that it, it is an option that is presented to us right now that will get us moving forward while remaining as equitable as possible at the current moment. That is my motion. Do I have a second? We agree with staff's recommendation with the caveat that they meet and discuss how individuals who want to procure the equipment can enter into a new agreement, be that a year, six months, two years, whatever that looks like.
Okay, second.
We have a motion and a second. That's your job.
Thank you. Would you be willing to consider a friendly addition to the motion? And that would be they would also allow a negotiations around subcontracting. They would not be able to decline a tow, but they could subcontract.
I would agree to a friendly amendment that said that would be part of the discussion for legal and the police department to figure out, that that would be a, a direction to them to have that discussion to bring back to us.
Okay, all right, consider that. All right, so that's, you accept a friendly amendment?
Yes.
All right. Does this meet the needs that we have for the police department as we extend the, we adopt the new agreement, but then we maintain and continue the negotiations?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we've got a motion, a second. All right, uh, we've got a motion, a second, uh, the yes.
Just one thing. So you, the maker of the motion accepted the friendly amendment. Does the ma- the second accept a friendly amendment? Yes, now you can proceed.
Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motions? Okay.
I would just like to point out, this is how sausage is made. And we did a very nice job, I think, of having a conversation that wasn't very well planned.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you guys.
Yes, uh, so that's, uh, uh, Will Rogers, as he said, uh, law and sausage, uh, but that's, uh, we, we can, we can work together and, and find solutions. I think that's, uh, that's why we're here. Okay, uh, with that, uh, no further discussion on the motion, uh, all in favor, seated public saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, it passes, uh, four to one, uh, Councilmember Branning, uh, opposing. Thank you. Uh, thank you for the discussion. Uh, discussion will continue on this. So thank you all very much. Uh, moving on to seven point one matters for consideration, the appointment of council members to the city council subcommittee for advisory body interviews. Um, thank you to, uh, uh, those who have served on this previously. Uh, this is, I'm always amazed at the level of talent that we have, uh, that wishes to step up and serve the community. Uh, and with that, um, let's see here. So most recently, we've had, uh, uh, Councilmember Kick and Councilmember Barrientos. Uh, so maintaining the rotation that we've had in the past is going to be, uh, uh, looks like Councilmember Kick and me. So, uh, I'm back in the rotation. So, uh, let's see, do I have a, need a motion for that or is that strictly an appoint, an appointment? Need a motion?
Motion please.
I move that, uh, the subcommittee for advisory bodies is Councilmember Kick, uh, and Mayor Marshand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um.
Am I allowed to second myself?
Okay, um, yes, well, we'll go for Vice Mayor Carling who made the second. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Don't forget a comment.
Any opposite? Oh, public comment.
No comments been received.
No comment. Okay, very good. Um, it passed unanimously. Uh, very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to the main event, seven point two. Uh, certification of referendum petition against resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero eighty-five. So where does the staff report?
Yes, here there is. We're getting the PowerPoint on the screen right now, um, and I will take it from there. First page. There we go. Thank you. Um, if it pleases the city council, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshand and members of the city council. My name is Jason Alcala and I am your city attorney. I will be making the presentation with this item this evening, and I am joined by acting city clerk Debbie Elam and the community development director Brent Smith. The item before you this evening is for the certification of the referendum petition for Move Eden Housing concerning the Veterans Park construction. Uh, this refers to the referendum petition that was circulated back in two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-two, and the council's in action in response to it now that it has been certified. Next slide, please. So to begin with, uh, a word about referendum law. Uh, there's a comprehensive memorandum attached to the staff report this evening that walks through it. But essentially, referendum is the power reserved to the voters to set aside a legislative act by the city council. Now, this power is not absolute. It is limited to legislative acts, and even then, some legislative acts cannot be set aside by the voters. When a referendum qualifies, the city council must reconsider the legislative act and then either repeal it or send it to the voters for either their approval or to set aside. If the legislative act is set aside either by the city council or by the voters, um, the city council is then precluded from taking, taking the exact same action for a period of one year. Next slide. Now, a bit of background for the referendum before you this evening. In twenty twenty-two, MEH or Move Eden Housing submitted a petition protesting resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight five adopted by the city council. That resolution approved and amended and restated disposition, development, and loan agreement with Eden Housing for an affordable housing project. Now, that agreement also contained language for the construction of an improvement to Veterans Park. That was included as an administrative convenience for city projects, but that process, process has been, in practice, has been discontinued by the city. Following a legal peer review, it was determined that the resolution did not contain a legislative act. And based upon my advice to the former city clerk, she declined to process the petition as a referendum. As we're well aware, litigation ensued. The city prevailed at trial court, but in twenty twenty-four, the appellate court determined that the language in the agreement for the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park was a legislative act. They made that decision because administrative records show for the first time and appeared, first appeared in the twenty twenty-two agreement. While there's language in the twenty twenty-one agreement relative to Veterans Park, the court determined that was just an option. It wasn't until twenty twenty-two that it was a must. Based upon that determination, our current, uh, acting city clerk immediately began processing the referendum, delivered it to the Almena County Register of Voters to examine the sig- signatures. They have completed that process and certified that it has enough signatures to qualify as a referendum for action here this evening. Next slide, please. So what is the referendum about? One of the things we look to is to see if we can find voters' intent. Um, if we look at here, the, on the screen before you is the actual language from the petition that was circulated for voter's signatures. Paragraph three contains the intent language. We request that the legislative acts contained in said resolution be repealed. So it's a legislative act. Next slide. Calling that out specifically, again, this is the language from the petition. We request that the legislative acts contained in said resolution be entirely repealed. Now, why does it say that? Because only legislative acts are subject to referendum. Administrative acts are not. And that's important here because a lot of, there's been a lot of misinformation in the community about what is the effect of this particular referendum. Now, the Court of Appeals asked, was asked this question and answered this question. It determined that the language in the agreement relative to the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park was a legislative act. It also considered other protests by Move Eden Housing, MEH, against their language in the ref- in the amended restated disposition development agreement. It rejected both of those other protests made by MEH and says those are not legislative acts. They're administrative, not subject to referendum. The Court of Appeals opinion went on to state that the elements in the twenty twenty-two amended restated agreement relative to the affordable housing project, those two were not subject to referendum because those decisions were made by the city council prior to twenty twenty-two. Next slide. Be that as it may, since this has been certified, the city council is faced with two options. Um, since there's a legislative act, one is to repeal resolution twenty twenty-two oh eight five. Option two is to call for an election for the voters to approve or set aside the language in the agreement for the city's construction of an improvements to Veterans Park. Now, you may still be asking yourself, what is this about? Next slide. So what is this referendum about? This referendum is only about the language in the agreement for the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park. The appellate court has determined the referendum has no legal effect for the other language. The language is not legislative and therefore not subject to referendum. So this is about Veterans Park. So if this is about Veterans Park, what is it not about? Next slide, please. The appellate court determined that the other terms and conditions in the agreement with Eden Housing, in particular for the affordable housing project, were made prior to twenty twenty-two, are not subject to referendum. Again, as I stated previously, the court expressly rejected MEH's challenges to the other language in the agreement. The court expressly held the language of the affordable housing project was not subject to referendum because those decisions occurred prior to twenty twenty-two. And those other parts of the agreement are beyond the reach of the referendum. Next slide. So you may be asking yourself, what is Veterans Park? For those who've been working with the, when approved twenty eighteen downtown plan, understand that it's one of the many elements that were approved for that downtown plan. Other elements include Stockman's Park. They include affordable housing, a science center, black box theater, and a retail component. Veterans Park was part of the open green space to extend from Livermore Avenue all the way through downtown area to L Street. It was also intended to complement the theme, the veterans theme that already exists in, in Stockman's Park adjacent to it. So while the city council took a number of actions relative to the construction of Veterans Park over the years, and those are set forth in a comprehensive memorandum prepared by, uh, Mr. Smith, staff member, um, uh, Jake Potter, about the history of the separate city council actions taken on the, uh, Veterans Park. Again, those started same genesis twenty eighteen downtown, approved downtown plan. They follow their own paths. City council took a number of actions, actually even funded and approved a CIP project for the construction of Veterans Park. It converged back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. That information relative to Veterans Park was not included in the administrative record before the Court of Appeals. Now, why wasn't it? It was believed the fight was over at the affordable housing project. The appellate court was clear, it's not. Just the one legislative act they're looking at is your, uh, approval of language for the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park. Now, be that as it may, the city council is faced with the decision here this evening, which is to repeal the resolution or to send it to vote of the people. Next slide. So what is the effect if the resolution is repealed? So other than avoiding the needless friction caused by the referendum, the practical effect is not much. Um, why is this? Because the Veterans Park was not intended to be constructed until either concurrently with or after the construction of the Eden Housing project. For a variety of reasons, including you want to be sure those improvements weren't damaged by adjacent construction was available for public use. Now, that project's not moving forward until twenty twenty-six, maybe twenty twenty-seven. It's going forward. Um, with the delay, the city council, if you were to repeal the ordinance, you would be precluded from taking an action on the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park as a part of the agreement with Eden Housing for a period of one year. And one year, you could reconsider that and figure out what you'd like to do as far as the city council. Um, that'll still give you an opportunity to either catch up with the Eden Housing project or to allow Eden Housing to go forward and build the park themselves. But you can make that decision in a year. Next slide. In addition, before you this evening, as we're always referring to as a companion resolution. Companion resolution takes advantage and actually, um, adheres to the law that was set forth in the Court of Appeals opinion. The appellate court said that the pro- those elements of the agreement were administrative relative to the affordable housing project. Now, again, the referendum only has legal effect to the legislative act. That was with regard to the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park. The remaining components in that agreement remain effective and valid and were not subject to the referendum, not subject to this day. They are beyond the referendum itself. Even though the city council took separate actions for the construction of Veterans Park, staff is taking a very conservative approach. They say they will stand down and not process anything with regard to Veterans Park until you return. That being said, you have the ability to adopt a companion ordinance, I'm sorry, companion resolution that acknowledges the status quo, which is the remaining terms and conditions in the agreement remain in full force and effect when they were adopted back in twenty twenty-two. And that's the companion, that's the companion orders before you. Last slide. So what are the actions before you this evening? The first is to adopt a resolution accepting the certification of the referendum. That's primarily ministerial matter, just to accept what the city, what the registrar voters submitted to the city clerk, showing that it qualified. With that action, you have a choice before you. Option one, which is to repeal the resolution twenty twenty-two oh eight five. Option two is to call for an election for the voters to approve or set aside the language in the agreement for the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park. Again, that level of specificity is important to avoid misleading the voters into assuming that this is something more than it is. It's only about the legislative act. It's not about the affordable housing project. So in addition to selecting one of those two options, the city council may also adopt the companion resolution to ratify and affirm the agreement with Eden Housing, excluding those provisions, again, relating to the construction of an improvements to Veterans Park. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, for the presentation. Uh, do we have any speakers tonight? I know.
Um, Honorable Mayor, we do have the proponent, uh, Michelle Cornell Davis has the opportunity to speak.
So but how?
And then, oh, sorry, I understand your question. After that.
So how many speakers have we got?
After Michelle, thirty-six.
Pardon me?
Thirty-six.
About thirty, okay. Um, let's go for, uh, let's go for two minutes. Uh, and, and we do want to hear which? Pardon me?
He's not talking about that.
So.
We have never had five minutes.
No, hey. No, no, no. He's not talking.
Private order. Um, I've been, the, I've been up here for fifteen years and we have never, ever allowed anybody to speak for five minutes routinely on a public hearing. No, I'm, this is my personal experience.
The proponent has five minutes?
I mean?
The opponent has five minutes?
Absolutely, but I'm
Nobody else.
Right, no, actually, the proponent, I, typically even the proponent, proponent up to ten minutes, uh, but not the general public. Yeah, sorry. Um, yes, so uh, you're the proponent, absolutely welcome. Uh, sorry for the misunderstanding here, uh, but yes. Please go on.
Okay. Well, good evening, Michelle Cornell Davis of Latham and Watkins on behalf of
Ms. Davis, can you move closer to the mic? Thank you. Hello? All right, is that better? Okay.
Good evening, Michelle Cornell Davis of Latham and Watkins on behalf of Move Eden Housing. We are disappointed in the staff report and proposed options for a, action on the referendum that staff has brought you. We have major concerns that the rights of thousands of voters who signed the referendum petition are being put in jeopardy yet again. I plan on touching on four of those concerns now. So first, the staff report claims that the referendum challenges only the Veterans Park funding included in the resolution and amended DDLA. That is incorrect. The referendum challenged the entire resolution approving the entire amended DDLA. The Court of Appeal agreed and specifically held that in the present case, the referendum petition challenged the whole of a resolution. Although staff cherry picks language from the petition, the city attorney prepared an impartial summary of the entire resolution, and the whole resolution was included as part of the petition. Our second concern is that staff misreads the Court of Appeal's opinion in the litigation that Move Eden Housing was forced to file when the city refused to process the referendum. The staff report states that the court determined the referendum was limited to only the portions of the resolution relating to the park. But I just want to quickly clarify what the Court of Appeal opinion actually said. The opinion did not determine that the referendum was limited to only park-related provisions of the resolution or that only park-related provisions needed to be placed on the ballot. Instead, the opinion held that because the park provisions were legislative in character, the entire resolution approving the amended DDLA was a legislative act subject to referendum. In other words, the funding of the park in the amended DDLA is what makes the, what makes the resolution a legislative act as a whole. Staff and the city attorney are misreading the opinion. Importantly, at oral argument, the city's appellate council specifically requested that the Court of Appeal direct the trial court to process the referendum only as to the park provisions. The court actually rejected this argument and held that the entire resolution is subject to referendum. The court has clearly rejected exactly what is proposed for adoption as option two tonight. The staff report also includes a history of Veterans Park actions and claims that had this information been included in the, uh, litigation, the opinion might have found differently as to the park provisions. By including this information, it appears that staff sees this as an opportunity to have the courts reconsider the opinion. But I just want to note that it is not possible for courts to reconsider the issue at this point. When a Court of Appeal issues an opinion, a trial court must follow it. Here, the trial court cannot take or consider new record evidence. Instead, it must follow the direction of the opinion only. To comply with the court's directives, the city must take action as to the resolution in its entirety rather than parsing out specific provisions for processing. Third, the staff report proposes to separate out the park component from the housing component of the project. But this would be inconsistent with the city's original project approvals. If the city bifurcates these two components, this could create a situation where the city decides to move forward with the housing development, but the voters or the city decide not to move forward with Veterans Park. This situation cannot occur because the project is conditioned on the dedication of the park, and the housing component relies on the park to comply with public open space requirements for multifamily projects. This project is not just a housing project, it is a housing and park project. The two components should not run on two separate tracks. Fourth, the staff report recommends that city council adopt a companion resolution that would ratify and re-adopt the amended DDLA in its entirety, except for the park provisions. Adopting this companion resolution would violate the elections code, which says that the city cannot adopt a new resolution that is essentially the same as the old one for at least a year. The elections code also prohibits cities from acting in bad faith or with the intent to evade the referendum petition when enacting new legislation. The companion resolution proposes to re-adopt the DD amended DDLA in every single way, except for a few provisions related to the park. In other words, the proposed legislation before you tonight is essentially the same as the old resolution, which was successfully petitioned and therefore would violate the elections code. So in sum, we request that the city council, one, either put the entire resolution to a vote or rescind the entire resolution. And two, decline to adopt the companion resolution. This would follow the Court of Appeal's directives and uphold the rights of Livermore's voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry for the misunderstanding there.
The first speaker is Linda Mandolini, followed by Greg Rogowski, sorry, followed by Sheri Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Linda Mandolini. I'm the president and CEO of Eden Housing. And first, I'd like to thank all of you on the city council and your predecessors and the city team for supporting affordable housing and particularly for supporting affordable housing in this location. When a ballot initiative calls itself Move Eden Housing, it's no joke about what they're trying to prevent from happening in this community. And so we're here tonight to urge you to rescind the resolution for the original DDLA and to re-adopt and affirm the housing portion of this and to move forward with the housing. As you all know, last month was Affordable Housing Month. Across the region, Eden opened up several properties and we celebrated with tenants who were desperately in need of a place to live. And all I could think is I wished that we could have opened this project in this location this year because as we all know, if we had proceeded two years ago, there would be a hundred and thirty families who desperately need a home living in downtown Livermore. And so with that, I thank you and I appreciate you staying the course on the housing.
The next speaker is Greg Rogowski, followed by Sheri Souza, followed by Jim Johnson.
My name is Greg Rogowski, ex-lab employee. Um, I'm here against the Eden Housing Project being built downtown. My wife and I go downtown. We live on Palm Avenue. We walk downtown two to four, six times a week.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind leaning closer so we can get your comment?
Sure.
Thank you.
And we were standing outside of Blacksmith Square and we looked across it and we thought how awful it would be to have housing there instead of a beautiful park. Downtown Livermore is such a vibrant downtown with people walking around, people with dogs, people with kids. And mayor, you've got a legacy project in every one of your speeches that you talk about in town, some good, some bad. Wouldn't you love to have a legacy park downtown instead of awful concrete buildings? Eden Housing can be built somewhere else in this town, not downtown, where we play, where we walk, where we eat, where we entertain ourself. So everyone here isn't against Eden Housing, we're just against it being built where it's going right now. So anyway, I just wanted to put my two cents in. I could be home with my cat right now, but instead I'm here talking to you. You're a fair man, a knowledgeable person, and I, I, I just don't think it deserves to be right downtown where we are. So thank you for your time and I, I hope you have a chance to vote on it in, in November. Let the people vote. Option two.
Can I, can I ask you, mayor, can you explain to people who maybe this is their first time speaking, if they agree with someone, what they, they should do in the audience?
Sure, um, yes, I hear that sort of snapping. Uh, if you agree with someone, uh, just raise your hand. Uh, and that way, we, thank you, yeah, then we and the, at the council can see it. We don't allow booing, we don't allow applause, uh, because I want everybody to feel comfortable speaking. So if you, if you agree with someone, uh, just raise your hand. And if you disagree, uh, just remain silent, please. But, but this way, the speaker isn't intimidated, uh, and I've heard this snapping. So just raise your hand, then we can see that you agree, but the person that's speaking doesn't see if people are for or against. So they're not intimidated. We want to provide a welcoming opportunity for everybody to be heard. So again, if you agree, raise your hand, uh, otherwise silence and uh, in, in order to move it along, uh, if you agree with somebody, when you get up and, and speak, you don't have to restate everything that they said. You can say, you know what, I agree with what that person said. Uh, and then we understand that and, and then we can move it along a little quicker. So I still want to hear from everyone. But again, we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable speaking. Okay.
Thank you, mayor. The next speaker is Sheri Souza, followed by Jim Johnson, followed by Barbara Limberis.
Good evening, mayor, city council and, um, city staff. My name is Sheri Souza. I am currently the CEO and president of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and I want to express a strong support for action considered pertinent to the forward movement of the downtown Eden Housing Project. The merits of the downtown plan, affordable housing component and the Eden Housing Project are many. The work and due diligence of the Livermore Planning Commission and the Livermore staff were comprehensive and thoughtful. The work of Eden Housing, a highly experienced and respected, uh, respected developer of affordable housing units was thorough and dynamic as it worked with the city to successfully assemble funding necessary to deliver a high-quality residence for a hundred and thirty workers and families. Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce is deeply familiar with the efforts and the expenses which the city of Livermore undergoes in its planning for the community. We are saddened and disappointed by the degrees to which some have gone to besmirch the integrity, legitimacy, indeed, the blood, sweat and tears of those that have participated in the public processes to develop the downtown plan and respective projects. It is unfortunate that choices have been made to mislead and misinform many in the community with an intent to undermine the downtown plan, including this project, causing the city to expend precious dollars and resources chasing down claims and declarations not grounded in reality. This has been harmful to the progress and inclusiveness of what was, is and will remain a hardworking, thoughtful and caring community. We would like to congratulate you and the Livermore community, as well as your affordable housing partner Eden Housing, on getting confirmation from the courts that the housing project can proceed after six years of unnecessary litigation, causing the unfortunate stalling of the project and the waste of taxpayer dollars spent. To urge you to accept the referendum here tonight and proceed a year from now to swiftly construct the park, which will enhance the Eden Housing Project and the completed development of the Livermore Downtown Plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Johnson, followed by Barbara Limberis, followed by Owen Bravant.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Well, I had a cute little speech ready to go. I decided not to do it. I think I find myself sitting here not understanding Jason's points on these things. The legal ramifications of all this, the hows and whys and the unnecessary, unnecessary, you know, depth that people are going to stop it or keep it going. And I, I find the whole thing ridiculous. What I say is, to that end is, build the park, figure out how to get it to happen, whether it's option one, option two, combined with three or four or five or whatever you may come up with. But let's stop the nonsense and let's move forward. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Barbara Limberis, followed by Owen Bravant, followed by Tom Souls.
Good evening, mayor, city council and city staff. My name is Barbara Limberis. I've lived in Livermore for six years and when my husband and I moved here, we moved right to the downtown because we want to be close to everything that's happening and there was a speaker previously who said that they did live downtown and they didn't want to see a building where a park should be. To me, I've seen the plans for Eden Housing and I think it will be an attractive development. I think the park will add some green space and I think if we can come to some kind of agreement, we moved to Livermore because we felt that Livermore was a city that included everyone and it was a vibrant and equitable community where all residents can live, work and enjoy Livermore's amenities, including the ones in the downtown. I'm delighted that the court clarified that the housing can move forward, although listening to the first speaker tonight, I'm not absolutely sure now what the path forward should be. All I know is that I urge you to let the housing proceed and come up with a plan to also build the park at some point in the future. Thank you.
The next speaker is Owen Bravant, followed by Tom Souls, followed by Tom Ramus.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, first of all, let me thank you for bringing this issue up early because you know the community's concerned. I read the letter from the, to the council from the Latham and Watkins dated twenty-one, uh, June, nine, twenty-two-four in its entirety. I found its points clear, compelling and determinant. As a fifty-plus-year resident of Livermore, my recommendation to the council is that not, it not support a bifurcation or an evasive redrafting of the cited resolution. Do not otherwise interfere with the rights we Livermore residents to make our wishes known with respect to the Eden Housing Project through the referendum project, process, uh, process. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Souls, followed by Tom Ramus, followed by Richard Ryan.
Hello, mayor and city council. Uh, my name's Tom Souls. Some of you know me. And I'm going to make this rather short. Uh, I was one of those group that was walking around collecting those eight thousand signatures. And as I talked to each neighbor, I explained what this petition was and basically it was a petition to look for alternate locations for Eden Housing, maybe even much larger housing, but not right there downtown. That's what I told them. That's what I thought it said. Forget about the administrative versus legislative legal stuff. That's what they believe. That's why they signed on the dotted line. About eighty percent of them signed. And now I have a feeling that I misled them. That now I'm being told that, no, that, that petition wasn't what I thought it was. And these aren't legal people. These are people who just wanted to see something better in that location and to move Eden Housing. And they're very much in favor of, uh, low-income housing, as I think all of us are. But more of it elsewhere and make this into a lovely legacy for Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Ramos, followed by Richard Ryan, followed by Rick Edson.
Thank you. I was also one that collected signatures from fellow citizens. And none of those also, like Tom experienced, everyone understood we were talking about that whole Eden Housing Project going downtown. I don't understand the weasel words that are coming out now, but do you really believe eight thousand people are that stupid? That they can't understand that they were voting for more than park space? I think I understand most of that is the space between two four-story apartment houses. That's not open space. That's someone's backyard. Now, this, I, I'm happy to hear you were here with us for fifteen years. I've been here forty-two years and I've never seen a city council not represent or work behind the very people that you're supposed to be serving. So don't give me this fifteen-year crap. This is terrible. Vote, let the people vote. We have, we have a valid signatures. We had a damn close election last time. We almost changed administrations. Let the people, we tried to express ourselves. We're not wasting the city's money. The money is the, is the real, the city is the real instigator for the waste that we've been going through for years. I've been going to these meetings well over a decade. And see, the, the Chamber of Commerce was against the, the city north of the freeway. They were against the, uh, putting fifty percent of our new developments to be viticulture. They're against anything like that. So they're, they're frankly, they're, uh, their opinion right now doesn't matter at all to me. Come on, let's make Livermore the living, like, like the last person or the other person just said. She moved here five years ago because it was a living vibrant community. We're still the same people. And let us have our say and don't keep fighting us and putting something in there that is contrary to what we want. Thank you.
The next speaker is Richard Ryan, followed by Rick Edson, followed by Greg Scott.
Well, I'm Richard Ryan. I'm a sixty-year resident of Livermore and I've supported a lot of you in the past. The Superior Court of the State of California commanded you upon service of this writ as follows, to complete the processing of the referendum challenging resolution twenty-two-oh-eight-five as required by the election code. And they gave you two other commandments. They'll skip for the point of brevity. I am certain the court understands the requirements of the election code. You can either withdraw the resolution or hold it in the election as there are sufficient legal signatures on the petition. No word does the court state that you can fudge the above directives by withholding a portion of the resolution twenty-two-oh-eight-five as suggested by the staff report. Thank you.
The next speaker is Rick Edson, followed by Greg Scott, followed by Alexis Ashley.
Honorable mayor Marshawn and city council members and staff. Uh, I'm Rick Edson. I came to live here in Livermore in nineteen-seventy-seven. My wife and I have raised two daughters since then and we love this town. I'll save us some time. Um, my comments would echo, uh, those of Sheri Souza and Barbara Limberis. The decision before you is, uh, is an important one and it's come about over very contentious process of developing the downtown plan. I would like to see that, I urge you to, uh, accept the certification of the referendum and proceed in such a way, um, that we can build the housing as is and take action, uh, so that Veterans Park can be built as well and we can have a complete plan downtown. And I thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Alexis Ashley, followed by Julie.
Good evening, Greg Scott. The people wanted a say, a basic say in this. And as a person that was homeless here up to two years ago, for six years, nine months, I know what it is like for this political machine to squash your voice. Why would you let a homeless person or somebody who's been homeless on the Human Services Commission, right? You know, what you do is the same thing here. You put all kinds of resources for very few people. You put millions of dollars for environmental cleanup. You put a, a huge loan for fifty-five years. How many people would like a mortgage at three percent for fifty-five years? I think a lot. You put an enormous amount of resources in and you don't want to give people a voice. I, I'm, I'm used to that. Been years of it. And to blame, to blame Move Eden Housing for the lack of, of, of not being affordable housing downtown, that's ridiculous. The resources are insane. Forty percent, sixteen, seventeen executives in Eden Housing take forty percent of the payroll home, okay? The executive director makes a base salary of three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, yet across the street in Legacy Development, there's not one affordable or low-income unit. Uh, the bottom, uh, uh, studio apartment is twenty-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month across the street, okay? To not be cost burden, you'd need to make nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy dollars a month, not a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year to not be cost burden. You know, there's something wrong with your plan. You, and you keep saying, you know, you don't listen. You don't listen to the people. You don't listen to me who was homeless here for six years. You don't listen to me, who was homeless here for six years, nine months. You know, what would it have taken for my friend, who I tried to get off the ground, my homeless friend, six years ago, to get him off the ground? How many resources to keep him from dying? He was homeless in his truck for ten years, ten years. He worked at Sandia National Laboratories for sixteen years, yet you put all these resources into a very few people. What's it cost per unit for the affordable housing at Eden Housing? What's it cost for the sixteen homeless units? It's, it's ridiculous. And you spent a huge amount of money on this to deny people their voice and to put it where it is.
The next speaker is Alexis Ashley, followed by Julie, followed by Alan Burnham.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Ashley, and my husband and I bought our first home here in Livermore just over a year ago. I wanted to say, echo the words of others and say thank you for the council's continued support of downtown Livermore Apartments. Your commitment to fostering an inclusive community that benefits everyone is truly appreciated. I'm in full support of the park design and its potential benefits of the community. Additionally, I'm pleased that the court has clarified housing can move forward independently. So I urge the council to adopt the companion resolution and consider the redevelopment and consider the development of Veterans Park in the upcoming year so that the housing initiative can proceed. Thank you.
The next speaker is Julie, followed by Alan Burnham, followed by Jan Brevant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Staff. As a Livermore resident of the past year, I, I really love this city. And I have three kids in college, and I hope to have future grandchildren where we can go downtown. There's a beautiful park. I was just in San Francisco, and whether you're in Central Park in New York City, you're in the park in San Francisco, there's one thing that you don't notice when you're in the park, and that is buildings right next to you. I don't know of anyone who wants to go out for a picnic, and they have two-four-story buildings next, next to them. I, I, I value low-income housing. I, like Greg Scott, I want more resources created to help more people. I want things like Eden Housing to exist. I also think that we have an opportunity in Livermore to take the time to create a park that's dynamic, that reflects our love of science, that isn't between two-four-story buildings, and I think we can do better. And if it takes a little bit more time, I don't want, I don't want low-income housing to be pushed further. So if we can get that moving first and then see a dynamic park that brings in more families and more, more dollars to Livermore and let families experience something even more dynamic than what this current project is, I would encourage the, the council to support the referendum that is before them this evening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Burnham, followed by Jan Brevant, followed by Nancy Keenan.
Good evening, City Council. The question tonight is simply how to comply with the appellate court decision on a voter petition that had enough qualified signatures. It's not to decide whether we need more housing or where it should be. The location of Eden Housing was established in twenty-twenty-one, is not referendable and is not changeable without Eden's consent. The certified petition asks for repeal or vote of the people of all legislative acts in the twenty-two amendment. I urge you to do exactly what the petition asks you to do and the court directs you to do. Option one, rescind the entire resolution, but then pa- repass the portions of the resolution that the court did not determine to be legislative, which includes the loan agreement transfer, transferring the land to Eden, to quote. The court, to quote the court decision directly, approval of the loan terms in the twenty-two two, twenty-two two agreement was not a legislative act. Without the second action, especially due to the severability clause in the contract, severability clause thirteen point nine in the May twenty-two agreement with Eden, you open up Livermore to a lawsuit by housing advocates and possibly even Eden. I realize that Eden Moving Housing will probably sue if you do repass those, but there's really no way there's going to be a compromise. So we might as well get back to court and get it over as quickly as possible.
The next speaker is Jan Brevant, followed by Nancy Keenan, followed by Jean King.
Mayor, City Councilman, my name is Jan Brevant. I have lived in Livermore most of my life, which has been a while. We have, I think we all agree that we need more affordable housing. Everything is so expensive right now. Affordable housing would be great. We have the opportunity to make Livermore a highlight of Northern California. We've got a nice chunk of land right smack in the middle of downtown. We could do wonderful things with this. We're not asking to move affordable housing to Pleasanton or Tracy or out in the middle of Boonies. Just move it across the street to Railroad Avenue, but that will give us this one big chunk that we can do a lot of really beautiful things with. And this will be a nice draw for people that have come to the restaurants downtown. A lot of people doing that. It'd be nice for the people over in Legacy. They'll have some nice big lawn areas. There can be a playground area for the kids, before and after meals or theater or whatever, and just a nice open space. And, and affordable housing will be right across the street. It would be nice for those people too, because they'll have a great big lawn instead of a long skinny one. That's it.
The next speaker is Nancy Keenan, followed by Jean King, followed by Doug Mann.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks. My name is Nancy Keenan, and I'm a resident of Livermore. I live within walking distance of downtown, just a few blocks away. I'm going to echo what others have said, thanking you for your vision of Livermore as an equitable community, which includes the Eden Housing project as designed. I support the development of Veterans Park and its benefits as well, but I sincerely urge the councils to take the necessary steps to proceed with the housing element now while considering how the park can be developed, be developed within a year. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean King, followed by Doug Mann, followed by Trish Monroe.
Good evening. I am Jean King. I have lived in Livermore for more than fifty years. I'm speaking for myself and not for any organization. I am not a member of Move Eden Housing, but I do support the referendum that is before the City Council tonight. I signed the referendum petition when it was circulated for signatures in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. I supported Move Eden Housing when it had to go to court to get the city to process the referendum when it refused to do so. I urge the City Council to either rescind the entire resolution or put the entire resolution to a public vote. Doing so will respect the will of the voters. What city staff and the city attorney are proposing, that the City Council should only put one part of the resolution up for a public vote, is incredulous and just another blatant attempt to ignore the public's views. Do not forget that the city attorney and the city clerk's actions to stop counting signatures on the referendum were found to be illegal by the Court of Appeal. You, they are walking you down another illegal path, and you should reject what they have proposed, including their position that it is okay to re-adopt the very agreement that the referendum challenges, with the exception of the parts regarding Veterans Park. Please listen to the voters and either rescind the resolution in full or put the entire resolution to the voters for them to decide. Obviously, from the speakers tonight, there is still controversy about what the citizens want for downtown, but you must follow the rules of the appellate court and rescind that part. Thank you.
The next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Adam, oh, excuse me, followed by Trish Monroe, followed by Adam Fady.
I'm going to try a different way to explain to you guys how you can make a decision tonight that will not be illegal. When I and several others brought you those boxes, or two of you anyway, three of you weren't here, brought you those boxes of, or I should say, brought the, the city, the former city clerk, the boxes of, of petitions, those are supposed to be sent on to the county the normal way that would have happened, sent on to the county, certified, comes back, and then you would have two choices to make, one of two decisions to make, the way we've seen so many times with referenda and initiatives. We've seen it over and over again. There are only two, two things you can do. Adopt it or put it up for a vote. That didn't happen this time because the city clerk acted illegally and didn't send them on. We know what happened. That all started from, of course, the bogus advice that the current city attorney gave to the city clerk at the time. Now, after you lose the lawsuit because of that advice, now what we have is the city attorney is giving you another load of bogus advice. He's telling you to do something that you shouldn't do. What you need to do is come back to where you were, where the City Council was two years ago, with those two decisions that you can make in front of you. You've got two options. One, adopt it, or two, put it to a vote of the people. This, the entire resolution, the entire referendum, to a vote of the people, not just parts and pieces, and I applaud their creativity, but it's wrong, absolutely wrong. You cannot have this competing resolution be, mess this up. You'll get in trouble. You'll get in legal trouble. Please don't do it. You've got two choices. You know what they are. Thank you.
The next speaker is Trish Monroe, followed by Adam Fady, followed by Jeff Caskey.
Good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor, wonderful city staff who has put so much time and effort into all of this over way too many years. Thank you very much for all that you have done. That's really all I need to say, right? As you know, I was on that side a few years ago. I helped bring, bring forward some of the work that is now under, under scrutiny. I gotta say, what I've said before, which is that if you own a home in Livermore, you are rich, and that it is the job of a city to create thriving, to create homes so people can live here. A city without people isn't a city. I urge you to do what has been asked by so many before me, which is to enable Eden Housing to go forward. And then frankly, I don't care what happens with the park. I really don't care, except that it shouldn't cost the, it should cost the city the minimum amount of money, because too much has been already spent on these ridiculous, ridiculous requests from people who really could spend their money otherwise. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Adam Fady, followed by Jeff Caskey, followed by Loretta Caskey.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Adam Fady, lifelong resident, worked downtown. I'd like, I'd love to see the housing project move forward. I think we need it. I think housing is an urgent need, not just at the city level, but everywhere, especially affordable housing. And after, you know, we get that project going, I'd like to urge you guys to work on the park. That's all I got. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Caskey, followed by Loretta Caskey, followed by Lori Souza.
Mayor and Council, I'm Jeff Caskey. This is, of course, not about whether Eden is good or bad. The city has been served with a referendum challenging the city's agreement with Eden Housing, validated by the court. The city's initial choice not to recognize the referendum caused two years' delay, as the court noted. The attempt to thwart this valid referendum would likely cause additional legal action delays and cost. The city website says, "The referendum is about whether Veterans Park should be built as planned. It does not affect the remainder of the city's agreement with Eden Housing," end quote. That's actually quite different from what the court wrote. To reassure Tom Soles, who was out collecting signatures, the court wrote, "The proposed referendum challenges a City Council resolution approving a development agreement between the city and real party in interest Eden Housing for development of housing in downtown Livermore," end quote. The court concludes with directions to order respondents to, and I quote, "Process the referendum petition and to place the proposed referendum on the ballot for municipal election," end quote. Does not order the city to process a piece of the referendum. It does not say you can rewrite it or process anything else that does not meet the court's definition. If the goal is more delay and cost, then proceed to try to dodge the court's order. California has a long history of jealously guarding the right of citizens' referendums since nineteen eleven. You can repeal the resolution or put the referendum to a vote, but you can't wishfully create a different referendum. I, I propose really that you reject the original referendum, then work on a better plan which accommodates low-income housing near downtown and preserves our downtown public space with public amenities. Thank you.
The next speaker is Loretta Caskey, followed by Lori Souza, followed by David Kent.
I am standing, okay? Good evening, staff. I know you're very hardworking. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As a, as a volunteer who gathered signatures for a group called Eden Housing, I can tell you that people signing my petition were supporting a change in the location of Eden Housing. They were not against low-income housing, and they were not against creation of a park. They were objecting to the location of Eden Housing in the most public of downtown squares.
The next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by David Kent, followed by Darcy Kent.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council and Staff. I'm Lori Souza. I've been a resident of Livermore since nineteen seventy-nine, and I really want to thank you for all your service to our city. I respectfully urge you to accept the staff's recommendation for Agenda Item seven point two, specifically Recommendation Number One, and Option One for Recommendation Number Two, which is to adopt a resolution repealing Resolution Number two zero two-two hyphen oh eight, and accept Recommendation Number Three. Thank you. I'm also here to, on behalf of Gina Bonano, who is a former City Council member, and I'd like to make her remarks. I want to thank you for your continued support of the approved downtown plan, including the affordable housing project. I have supported and participated in the development of this plan as a planning commissioner, as a member of the Downtown Steering Committee, and as a council member, during which time I voted to approve the amended DDA. The court's recent decision allows the housing to proceed independently from the park. This much-needed housing can now move forward. Sadly, due to unnecessary and costly litigation, the project comes years later and at much greater cost as compared to when it was first approved. The families and individuals who work in our community, who would, who could have had an affordable home for all these years, have lost the most. I urge you to, one, rescind the twenty-twenty-two council action, two, reaffirm the administrative items allowing Eden to proceed with construction of the housing, and, three, move forward with the construction of the park honoring our veterans one year from now. Sincerely, Gina Bonano.
The next speaker is David Kent, followed by Darcy Kent, followed by Terry Land.
Good evening. David Kent, local wine grower. Another frivolous lawsuit has brought us here tonight in support of a referendum, among many referendums, that were all intended to do one thing, which is to deny working families affordable housing in Livermore. That is the common element. What I want, like to spend my remaining minute and thirty-four talking about is just the collateral damage. No doubt that when you deny affordable housing, you're hurting working families, and you're also hurting the taxpayers when we have to defend against these lawsuits and we have to defend, and we have to do elections on these referendum. But the same group of people, the small group of people who were behind these referendums, they also did many other things. They opposed the, the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead, simply because it wasn't located on land that was intended for affordable housing. They opposed Stockman's Park because it was not configured in such a way to prevent affordable housing from being built downtown on that land. And now they're opposing Veterans Park because it's not configured in a way to prevent affordable housing from being built on land that was acquired for affordable housing. And I've heard some say, we, we support affordable housing, and I think many who signed the petitions probably do. They were misled. But the same group that has put this referendum forward in this frivolous lawsuit oppose all affordable housing. They afford, they, they oppose transit-oriented affordable housing in midtown. They're supporting, all of a sudden, lay-down storage fields that produce neither high-quality jobs or housing in order to block affordable housing here and block affordable housing everywhere in our community. The public supports affordable housing. I think this council does as well. Do what's necessary and what's legal. Thank you.
The next speaker is Darcy Kent, followed by Terry Land, followed by Michael Farucci.
I want to bring up Mayor John Marshawn.
I want to bring up Mayor John Marchand, the council, and especially the staff. You guys have continued to work very hard for the majority of supporters who keep voting in this, the council to, to see Livermore move forward. And that means forward for everybody. We're very excited about building affordable housing on land that has been designated for years for affordable housing. And it's time to move forward. I urge you to accept the referendum. And then in a year when we can move forward with Veterans Park, to move forward with that as well. Thank you.
The next speaker is Terry Land, followed by Michael Ferrucci, followed by David Jonas.
I've been an employee at Livermore Labs since 1992 and a resident here for twenty-four years. And I urge you to adopt Option 1 and proceed with Eden Housing and the park. And I echo what Lori Souza said for the remarks.
The next speaker is Michael Ferrucci, followed by Davis Jonas, excuse me, David Jonas, followed by Valerie Jonas.
Good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor, members of the community. I, I'd like to say I agree with the first speaker, Michelle Cornwell Davis. I've been a, a member of this community for forty-three years. I've lived here, owned a business downtown. I live downtown and actually have a rental unit downtown. I personally hope and pray that you will all respect and honor Livermore citizens' desire to hold and put the entire referendum on the November ballot, which represents a crucial element of our downtown development and specifically reconsider the potential relocation of the Eden Housing Project, giving serious consideration to all of the alternative scenarios. Your commitment to transparency and the democratic engagement ensures that the voices of our residents are heard and valued in shaping the future of our city. Your responsiveness to our collective call for a referendum reflects a commendable dedication to serving the public interests and fostering a more inclusive and participatory decision-making process. I want to thank you for unwavering commitment and good luck.
The next speaker is David Jonas, followed by Valerie Jonas, followed by Alan Marling.
Good evening. First, I urge the council to adopt the recommendations identified in the agenda as Recommendation Number 1, Option Number 1 of Recommendation, Recommendation Number 2, and Recommendation Number 3. I also wish to express my disgust that a tiny clique of Eden Housing opponents has leveraged deep pockets and relentless litigious machinations to cause a multi-year delay in building critically needed workforce housing in our community. Move Eden Housing claims that their animus towards Eden Housing stems from a belief that developing the Eden Housing, developing Eden Housing site will degrade the character of downtown Livermore. If that concern were genuine, then why did the same group operating under a different alias aggressively pursue construction of a mammoth regional theater in the same location which they now insist must be open space? And why did the same group not utter a peep of protest against the, the construction of legacy apartments? How can Eden Housing threaten the character of downtown while a much larger luxury apartment complex with rent starting at $4,000 a month just a few feet away from Eden Housing poses no threat? And why didn't Move Eden Housing slap legacy apartments with the sequel lawsuit like they did, like they did Eden Housing, since the legacy site exactly like the Eden site was tainted with the toxic underground plume? You can draw your own conclusions. Move Eden Housing went fishing through the court system for legislative acts in the amended DDA that could derail the Eden Housing Project. Both the Superior and appellate courts, courts agreed that every act related to the Eden Housing land sale, financing, and construction is administrative and therefore not eligible for referendum. The only act the appellate court deemed legislative is a decision to construct Veterans Park. It would be cruelly ironic if Move Eden Housing pursued a referendum to stop construction of a public park on the, on the Eden Housing site since that's precisely the type of use that Move Eden Housing sought on it. It'd also be a huge slap in the face to our veterans. Sadly, by appealing, by appealing the Superior Court's ruling, Move Eden Housing has delayed construction of both Eden Housing and Veterans Park for another year, this is shameful. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Valerie Jonas, followed by Alan Marling, followed by Chance Barrettski.
Excuse me, two minutes? Okay.
You know I have a lot to say. Good evening, Mayor Marchand, City Council members, city staff. My name is Valerie Jonas, and I am here this evening because I am a member of the Board of Directors of Spark Theater and, and am speaking on behalf of the board. Spark, formerly Livermore Shakespeare Festival, has provided theater performances and educational programs in our community for over twenty years. Each year, we serve thousands of adults and students. Spark is currently developing a building that is part of the site-specific plan for the area under discussion that Black Box Theater referred to earlier. This new flexible theater space will allow year-round indoor performances for Spark and a range of other performing arts providers. We have a direct interest in the ongoing development of the area and reaffirm our commitment to the synergy of the various elements in the site-specific plan. Spark supports the three recommendations provided by staff as follows. Adopt a resolution accepting the certification of the petition against Resolution Number 2022-085. Option 1 of the second recommendation, repeal Resolution Number 2022-085. And adopt the companion resolution to reaffirm all terms other than Veterans Park. Spark looks forward to all projects moving forward as timely as possible. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Chance Barrettski, followed by Matt Reagan.
Mayor and council members, I am in favor of affordable housing and reaffirming the agreement with Eden Housing, but I'm against plutocrats Gene King and Joan Sepulveda treating Livermore as their fiefdom. Sepulveda, owner of the Independent, and her rich friend, King, leveraged their wealth to waste even more of our taxpayer money. And those plutocrats are perfectly willing to lie to get their way. Amplify those lies with the local paper as well as empower them with frivolous lawsuits and bad faith referendums. Many people who signed the referendum believed they were advocating for affordable housing. The signature harvesters at Safeway asked, "Would you like to help house the homeless?" That sounds good. Too bad, it was a lie. What the referendum has done was delay Eden Housing, which is actual affordable housing that can be built, not smoke and mirrors, deceptions laid out by the plutocrats, Sepulveda, and King. The housing must be downtown to access public transportation, to build a vibrant and walkable community. It cannot be moved across the street. Sepulveda and King should have known that and likely did. Now, who is harmed by their power plays? Livermore workers, the caregivers who help our elderly, the office staff, the police department, our teachers and waiters. They serve us. But Sepulveda and King do not see them as equals worthy of living among us. Not to put too fine a point on it, but working class is more likely to be people of color. Affordable housing is a racial justice issue. So, by blocking affordable housing by any means necessary, Joan Sepulveda and Gene King are guilty, not only of elitism and classism, but also racism.
The next speaker is Chance Barrettski, followed by Matt Reagan, followed by Tim Sabranti.
Hope that's all right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Chance Barrettski. I'm a policy advocate with East Bay for Everyone. And while I'm not here on their behalf, I also want to give a shout out to our friends at the Green Belt Alliance. I think if you, I could get up here and say nothing other than to point to city staff's recommendations, and I think I would have made my point pretty thoroughly. But, you know, you've heard from many other speakers tonight how desperately affordable housing is needed in Livermore, how severely Livermore residents are affected by rent burdening. And what I want to do, in addition to reiterating those, those deep concerns that, that crisis affecting the entire Bay Area, is to attempt to maybe put the legal question here in, in my understanding and maybe clarify it, because you've heard some interesting things tonight. From my understanding, if you approve the staff's recommended plan of action and repudiate the earlier resolution, you have satisfied the requirements of the appellate court. The only thing that would then prevent you from approving the companion resolution to recognize the parts of the development agreement that are not referendable would be this novel argument made by Move Eden Housing about this part of the elections clause. Now, it seems to me that there is actually a very substantial difference between the resolution you would be repudiating and the companion resolution in that one would be a referendable question, the original, and one would not be, the companion resolution. That seems like a fundamental difference to me, and for you to act otherwise and defer to Move Eden Housing here, you would effectively be giving referendum authority over a question that is not referendable. And that seems quite absurd. I also just want to note that it's interesting to me that an organization named Move Eden Housing spent so much time and effort gathering signatures for a petition that did not in fact have the legal power to Move Eden Housing. Now, that question is beyond me, and I'm nearly out of time. That's something for, maybe another time, another discussion. But at the end of the day, I want to thank the council for their patience and all of their tireless effort on this. I want to thank city staff for their time, effort, and input. And I want to urge you to move forward with the staff recommendation tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I do a little mom moment here? I hear a lot of chatting. I'm gonna go on my teacher voice. There's a lot of chatting in the audience, which actually makes it difficult for me as someone who gets distracted easily to pay attention. So, if you have already spoken and you would like to continue your conversation, I would very much appreciate it if you could do that in the hall, because I want to give respect to those that are still speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Marchand, City Council members. My name is Matt Reagan. I'm here representing the Bay Area Council. We are a collection of the region's largest employers. I've been coming to city council meetings like this for close to twenty years, advocating for many thousands of affordable housing and market rate housing projects across the region. And I have to commend the opponents of this project. I don't think I've seen a group as adept at throwing sand in the gears of housing quite like this group in my twenty years of doing this. So congratulations to them. I think the city acquired this parcel in 2007 and identified it as an affordable housing site, and here we are sixteen years later, still debating whether we should have affordable housing on a site that was designated for affordable housing in 2007. This is the poster child for the problems that we experience as a society and as a region. We all know that affordable housing, the lack of affordable housing, is the challenge of our times. We know that our region is losing population, our youngest generation, our young, our, our own children are leaving, they can't afford to live here. Three hundred thousand vehicles a day drive into the Bay Area from where we have outsourced our affordable housing to the Central Valley. Eighty thousand vehicles alone come over the Altamont Pass, right in front of Livermore, every morning, and eighty thousand every night. Those people should be living here, near their jobs, near transit, in walkable communities in downtowns like Livermore. So please adopt the staff resolution, please move forward with this project. It's been sixteen years. Let's not make it seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen. Let's move forward and get this housing built as soon as possible. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Sabranti, followed by David Best, followed by Joe Clark.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. Tim Sabranti, speaking tonight on behalf of the Innovation Tri-Valley Leadership Group, ITV, representative of some of the region's largest employers, as well as startups and other business organizations and, and members. And Eden Housing, this project, has been a top priority of ours since 2007. I associate ourselves with the comments of Mr. Reagan when he talked about, you know, how long it's taking. And so this being a contributing factor to the high cost of housing. We urge the council to move forward tonight without delay. We appreciate the support of the council, we appreciate the support of staff, past councils as well, that have gotten us to this point. We, we recognize that the delays are not caused by the city council and that we encourage you to do everything within your power to continue to move this along. When we talk to our members, we engage our members, one of the top challenges, they say, is business community, is the lack of affordable housing. It is, when we ask, what are your biggest challenges? For some, it's taxes, regulation, we hear that traffic, but it's lack of affordable housing. And it's not just lack of affordable housing, but it's lack of affordable housing in the correct locations in accessible to transit, accessible to jobs, accessible to other amenities, parks, everything else. So when we did our Vision 2040 Plan and mapped out what type of developments we want to see, this is exactly the type of development that our business community said that they wanted to see. So again, on behalf of ITV, urge you to move with the staff recommendation. And just as an aside, a point of personal privilege, I'll speak in my individual capacity as a trustee for the Chabot-Las Masidas Community College District and just say, delay, this is exactly the type of project our students need right now. This is the type of project our faculty and staff need right now. I know there's some people saying, well, move across the street, move somewhere else. Any more delay is another day that one of our students doesn't have access to a home. One of our faculty or staff doesn't have access to a home. So just urge the council to continue to stay the course, and thank you for your time.
The next speaker is David Best, followed by Joe Clark, followed by John Steinbush.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've only been a resident here for twenty-five years, so a little bit less than some of the speakers, but I consider myself a lifer here. I do live in the downtown. And I want to echo Mr. Reagan's and Mr. Sabranti's comments about the fact that the Affordable Housing Project has been in the plan for many, many, many years. And that was not by chance, that was through your, your great and capable staff's efforts over more than a decade of public outreach and study and planning. These guys know what they're doing. They understand city planning, and they put together a really good plan, and I think we need to execute it. And so it is kind of unfortunate that we've had to go through a lot of the rigmarole associated with referendums and, and folks trying to block a plan that's been in place and supported by many members that have participated in those outreach efforts. I was one of them. I went to several of them, and I, and I saw all the plans. And so there was a lot of, during those outreach events, there was a lot of positive support for the Eden Housing Project where it is today, as you've seen tonight with a lot of positive comments. So I would like to urge the council to certify the petition, rescind the 2022 resolution, and adopt the companion resolution as your staff has recommended. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe Clark, followed by John Steinbush, followed by Andrew Sebey.
Hello, I'm Joe Clark, and I'm a twenty-eight-year resident. I spoke one other time to the then-council six years ago in favor of the Legacy Project, and look at what we have today. We read in the newspaper that it was this ugly thing, and it wasn't, oh, there's all this stuff. It's a gorgeous project, and I invite people to go take a look at it and see what market rate housing can be in downtown Livermore, a great project. My support today for Eden Housing is based on what I've learned through my volunteer work. For the last seven years, I volunteered with a local nonprofit focused on helping people to raise themselves out of poverty through a mentoring program. Our clients range from recent high school graduates here locally to those in their seventies. Most of these have full, part-time work. And they have their housing either through renting a room, staying with a friend. Maybe they have a small apartment, way too small for the number of children and their family size, or they're in a shelter. Sometimes their solution is to move away from their connections in their family. A lot of our clients end up moving either to the Central Valley or to where my kids are, Reno in Florida. I also volunteer as a financial coach for Eden Housing. I work with very similar clients in terms of their family size, their financial situation, the fact that they're working, but they cannot afford expensive housing, like a legacy project, as was mentioned, twenty-five hundred, four thousand dollars a month. So what I know from Eden and working with all these people on their finances is it's similar, but they have housing stability. They have very nice facilities. I talked to people in Eden facilities all over the state, and it seems to be very well-maintained, and I know they could put together a beautiful project, as we've seen in the drawings. The thing that really grabs me tonight, though, is the alternative. If, if you don't like something, what's your plan B? It's to put it over there. Well, where is the, the proposal? Show me the financials. Is there land available? The, the financials on this situation would be outrageous if we tried to put it across the railroad. It's not viable. So I, I definitely urge you to continue the good work.
The next speaker is John Steinbush, followed by Andrew Sebey, followed by Yoweed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's John Steinbush. I'm a commercial real estate broker with Colliers, and I've been active in the Tri-Valley for more than forty years, specifically in Livermore, in Pleasanton, in Dublin, and then over out into the valley. Since the adoption of Livermore's downtown-specific plan, Livermore's downtown transformation in your community has created the heart and soul of Livermore. has created the heart and soul of Livermore. Eden Housing Veterans Park Project is a long-awaited next step in that downtown transformation. Housing development in California is a divisive subject, as we know. But the facts are housing's in short supply and desperately needed. Workforce housing is at the top of that list of needs. I urge you to adopt option one in the staff report tonight. This would let the Eden project move forward to provide such needed workforce housing. If the park needs to wait a year or so to come along, that'll be fine. It'll be, it will come along, and it will help complete the downtown vision set in your specific plan. And finally, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your perseverance and fortitude in staying the course. This project has been difficult, but you should, you should all take pride that it will now move forward. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Sebey, followed by Yaweed Qualen Zardara, followed by Carl Wentie.
Brief point of order, or a personal privilege. How many speakers do we have remaining?
Three.
Okay, never mind that.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Andrew Sebey, I am outside legal counsel to Eden Housing. And I just wanted to very briefly address the points of law raised by Move Eden Housing's legal counsel. I don't want to belabor that here. This is not the forum for, for a legal debate. But suffice it to say that we strongly disagree with the legal representations that have been made here this evening by Move Eden Housing regarding the legality of what the city staff is proposing for you. The bottom line, the very simple bottom line is that a referendum can only reach legislative actions. And the only legislative action identified by the Court of Appeal was the funding of Veterans Park. With the stripping of that, that is the only thing that this council has barred from proceeding with for a year. The housing is not the subject of the referendum. It may have been the target, but it's not the subject. And therefore, you should, in our view, follow the recommendations of your city staff. The city attorney is well armed with legal authority that supports the position that he has put forward, and we would urge you to proceed accordingly. Thank you.
The next speaker is Yaweed Qualen Zardara.
Good evening, Mayor and city councils. I'm a resident of Livermore, and I am raising two beautiful kids, three beautiful kids in the city. I'm a first immigrant in this country. I've been working hard. I want to pinpoint something that probably nobody else mentioned. A person that comes in this country and work hard and cannot afford to live in a beautiful or close to the city, it is very important to have those people and vote for those people, advocate for those folks that can live in a places that it's near their workplaces or near to their places that they can easily get access to their workstation. They're hardworking people. They are very aggressive and helping their community, helping their family to grow up and raise their kids and, but can afford in a beautiful places. I live in affordable housing. My parents live in affordable housing. And I've been very successful. I consider myself very successful and being actually working for the communities. Again, I am very urging the mayor and the city council to move forward with this project and do not delay anymore, as I heard that it's been sitting, this project's sitting for many years. We cannot afford to delay this anymore. Thank you all.
The next speaker is Carl Wentie.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council, and Carl Wentie. I live 5565 Tesla Road, just out of town. I grew up on Vancouver Way. Thank you for those who put on bulletproof vests, go to work. Thank you to the city staff for what you do. Thank you for those that showed up to speak on this subject. I'm going to read a statement from Mr. Bob Warner. I think you all know that gentleman, our ex-mayor. He encourages that you rescind those actions, reaffirm the administrative acts, the non-legislative acts, and then work as expeditiously as possible to construct Veterans Park. Quoting, this is Mr. Bob Warner, "I am appalled the small group of many names primarily funded and directed by the wealthy owner of independent continues to stop at nothing to hinder the progress in our downtown. They have spent inordinate sums to spread misinformation, buy petition signatures, influence elections, and pursue frivolous lawsuits, resulting, resulting in an appalling waste of our community's precious resources and everyone's time. Once again, I find myself urging Joan Sepala and her small, six hands back there lately, and her small group of disgruntled followers to stop their baseless and divisive delaying tactics so that Livermore can finally finish the downtown approved so long ago." I fundamentally agree with what Mr. Warner said. And, and the law's going to die. Odds are they're going to put another lawsuit in. There'll be, it'll be adjudicated again in terms of how it flows. Clearly, there's overwhelming support to do everything in your possible power to move this forward as expeditiously as human possible. Within the contracts of the law, no one they're going to sue, right? High-priced lawyers, high price. Thank you, Joan Sepala, for funding that. I want to say one thing. I will never forget the look in that signature gatherer's eye. Those that gather signatures part of our community, I salute you. Those that come from out of our community for 20, 25 bucks a signature, when it comes to the end game, when I explained to that gentleman what this was about, I will never forget the pain in his eyes, working against what he believed in. So you all know what you need to do. Please do it. Those that want to, those that want to pick a fight, like, you know, it's our community too. There's only, there's, there's less and less of you, like, there's fewer and fewer, but let's go, let's go. Shake your head.
And that concludes public comment. Can we take a?
I was going to suggest the same thing. Okay, let's take, let's take about 10 minutes. All right. So 10-minute break. We'll convene back here at 9:25. Thank you very much for all of your comments.
Oh, all.
Good evening, Mayor and city councils. I'm a resident of Livermore, and I am raising two beautiful kids, three beautiful kids in the city.
Been down here. All right, well, hold on until we get TV thirty here.
They said you could go ahead.
Pardon me?
They said you could go ahead.
Okay, all right. No need to count down. All right, welcome back. We're here for round two of the June twenty-fourth meeting in the Livermore City Council. We just completed the public hearing on seven point two. The public hearing on seven point two has been closed. This is regarding the referendum. Going to be bringing it back to the council. Are there any questions at this point? Questions first, and then we'll take comments. Any questions? That councilor kick?
Okay, I have a couple of questions for our city attorney. The discussion that we're having tonight, is this discussion that is agendized about housing?
Not directly, no, it's not. So again, I think was one of the commenters made a speaker's been an interesting comment, which was that may have been the target, but that's not the effect of the referendum.
Okay, so if we're not discussing housing, if I'm understanding correctly, we can only have but only legislative items can be referendable.
That is correct. That's the correct statement of the law. The referendum law restricts the public's right and voters' right to set aside a legislative act of the city council.
Okay, so I made a cookbook reference the other day in trying to explain something in layman's terms, and I'm going to attempt again, and it might be terrible. But I'm hoping you can check in with me and see if this explanation rings true in legal terms, except this is very much parenting terms. So from my understanding, a legislative act would be telling my daughter she is allowed to go play outside. I made a decision, she may go play outside. The administrative act would be allowing her to open the back door. If suddenly I said, I didn't say you could open the back door, I only said you can go play in the yard. That wouldn't really make sense because I need to take administrative, certain administrative action in order to make that legislative action true. Does that parenting analogy make any sense?
I understand where you're coming from. I think it holds together. I think your decision, which is legislative, which is you can play outside. What you're looking for is implementation. How do you accomplish that? And you made the ways and means by allowing the door to be opened. That is administrative in that metaphor.
So I believe what happened here is we, we thought we were letting our child play outside. And so we were just saying, sure, open the door. Great. And so we did in earnest believe that everything was a administrative act. I do not believe that we thought we were sneaking something in. But it just so happened that there was with some sort of discreet, I don't know, maybe she wanted to bring her brother, and I didn't say he could come. But our intent and how we were thinking about it at the time, at least how I was thinking about it at the time, was that that's what the difference between a legislative and administrative act. So that is why the park is only up for a conversation, because that is the legislative decision. Everything else was just you're allowed to put on your shoes, you're allowed to open the door, all of those things necessary. So all of those things necessary to get outside, to build the housing, those little administrative steps are not subject to referendum, correct?
In this metaphor, yes. And with this metaphor as well, when you apply it to this particular case, the court determined that those other actions occurred prior to twenty twenty-two.
Those are my clarifying questions, and I will move on to the rest of my counsel.
Okay, I do have any, any questions from the council?
Do we have questions or comments?
Both, whatever you want. Questions or comments? Questions first, then comments.
I have more questions. I'm gonna let you know, I'm one of the people that gathers signatures. I gather a lot of them. And even before I even thought about running for city council. Anyway, there's an idea that I want downtown, and I supported it, so I went and got signatures. And I think it's simple. Let the people vote. Just get it over with. If they go your way, fine. If they go the other way, fine. I will, I'll live with that. And I don't mind if I lose on the vote, fine, if that's what the people want. But it's not about housing. I'm for affordable housing. And I, you know, it's just the issue where I believe that when we first started thinking about this, my wife and I went downtown, there's renditions. What would you like? And we voted, we voted for the one that had the park. I thought a park was great. I do a lot of backpacking, do a lot of hiking and all that. Getting out there, most of you city dwellers don't do that, is an experience you should go do. Anyway, it does clear, cleans your mind and your heart when you go out there. A city park, I think is important. It could be a good vibrant place for the city to go there and meet there, gather there, have parties there, whatever you want to do down in that city park. The housing will be built, one way or the other, it will be built for and still the definition of affordable housing drives me crazy, because I know if I was a teacher, sorry, I probably wouldn't be able to afford it anyway. I kept my house, my son in the area because I gave him my house. Because I knew if I didn't give him my house, he'd move to, my other son did, to a camp, someplace far away, Montana, or I'm sure not Manteca. Those are getting expensive too, anyway. So what I'm coming down to is, I would like either we vote and let the referendum go and let the people vote, or we rescind it. Because I think if we go the other way, I think we're going to find ourselves in court. I know we have a million dollar reserve, so I guess we could use it up in court. You know, one of the few cities in the area that's in the, in the black. If people want to vote, let them vote. If you don't like the idea, then vote no. Okay, simple, no or yes. And then it'll be settled. But if you, if we go the other way, it's not going to be settled. We're going to go back to court again. I know we're going to go back to court. I don't have deep pockets, sorry. I'm not rich. I was a kindergarten teacher, so you know, my economic background, I don't have money. Anyway. That's my feeling, and I think hopefully you will, we will go and see this in the ballot and end this, this silly thing right now.
My spear? Thank you.
Well, thanks. It's interesting to me, I'll say, first of all, it's interesting to me that we can have attorneys read the same words in English and come up with different conclusions about what they mean. And again, thank you all for being here this evening. It's, it's too bad some people had to leave or chose to leave, I guess. We also got lots of emails today. I think I counted fifty email, more than fifty emails. All in favor of moving forward by rescinding and moving forward with the staff recommendation. Plus the, what I counted as more than two dozen people supporting that with about a dozen people suggesting otherwise. I also appreciate the staff work on this topic, and in particular, the timeline. I thought the timeline was pretty instructive. And I'm not sure everyone will agree with what I have to say, but I'm going to provide my remarks and hope, I hope it helps you understand how I've reached the decision that I have in terms of supporting the staff recommendation this evening. So I'm going to go back to the spring and summer of twenty seventeen, where the mayor, in this case Mayor Marchand, appointed me to be, to serve as a co-chair of the steering committee in that spring and summer of twenty seventeen, made up of nineteen individuals, including several who were the principal contributors to the several lawsuits that Livermore has faced since the council decisions. Some of those people are here today. Some people were, some of the people on that committee were also here earlier and have left, but we had some people here that have served on that, and like I said, were principal contributors to the lawsuits that we have faced since that council decision in January twenty eighteen. In October twenty seventeen, I met with two of the principal contributors to that lawsuit. And at that meeting, they asked me personally to propose green space extending from Livermore Avenue to L Street. Then in January twenty eighteen, Mayor Marchand took the council through what I call a very deliberative process to examine all aspects of the downtown development. The results of the downtown steering committee strongly influenced the decisions made on that evening, or actually it was two evenings, in January twenty eighteen. When it came time to vote on the housing, I asked the staff to redesign the housing to include green space running between the future buildings, fulfilling the request made of me in October seventeen. The proposal passed five zero. In fact, all votes that evening were five zero with one exception, and that was the hotel location. Every vote since January twenty eighteen that is related to the development of the downtown has been five zero. That's four different councils. Yet a small group of people unhappy they didn't get their way while serving as participants in the downtown steering committee seven years ago have been fighting state, city council every step of the way since then. I certainly have no understanding of their motivation, none. What I do understand is that their tactics have cost the taxpayers, and that means all of us, millions of dollars in legal fees, delayed the construction of badly needed affordable housing, and stood in the way of a downtown park dedicated to those serving in the armed forces. For me, it is time to move forward and fulfill the commitment city council made to the residents of Livermore six and a half years ago in twenty eighteen. Thank you for your time, and thank you for being here.
Councilor Branning? Oh, yeah, comments, okay. Customer kick, yes.
Okay, so earlier, we had a conversation about tow trucks, and we were all trying to get to an agreement. So I wanted to do some level setting and some reminders. I feel like we'd never come to an agreement or consensus if no one understands the why. As a city, we've agreed on a five-year strategic plan, so I'm going to go ahead and read you our vision, and because why not? It's, we're already here having fun. If you agree with me, you should raise your hand. But this is the city's vision. If you believe this is what Livermore should be. We strive to create a safe, healthy, welcoming city for all, our diverse community members, residents, visitors, and businesses. We envision a future that honors our shared history and respects our environments as we seek equitable access to opportunity for all. Okay, good. I'm really having a hard time not calling on all of you when you raise your hand. One of the things that we also have listed in this five-year strategic plan, which if you have not read it, please do, is our values. And the last value is our commitment to continuous improvement. We strive to continuously assess and improve our methods of service to increase equity and effectiveness in an environmentally sound manner. Everything that we're talking about in these many years from twenty seventeen on, I think is attempting to move us in that direction. And I will say that I was wrong when tonight I felt frustrated that we were still talking about housing. I was irritated and frustrated that we were having a conversation, and there were thirty-nine people talking about housing, when really, what's on our agenda is not housing. And so I wanted to be efficient and save time, and let's not have all these commenters, and let's stay focused, and why are we wasting staff time? And stop commenting about housing. That's not what it's about. But the reality is that we have lovely places for theater in Livermore. One is Spark Theater, which I very much love. And right here, this is political theater. That's exactly what this is. And so let's call it what it is and remind ourselves that sometimes we're here on the dais, and we're supposed to be focused on getting things done, addressing the agenda item as it is, and moving things forward for our community. The reality is that we are a very large group of people with lots of big feelings, and sometimes when people have big feelings, you need to hold space for them to have those big feelings. So that's what we ended up doing tonight. We held space for people to have big feelings. And as a parent, that's something I do a lot. It's usually not televised, but it's something I'm used to doing. So I appreciate all those that came out and spoke, even though what we're about to talk about is not actually housing. I am happy we were able to hold space for you to share how you're feeling about something that affects all of us very deeply. So when we get to the item that is actually not about housing, I do want to remind you that what we're experiencing tonight is a community gathering of feelings, sharing, theater, whatever you'd like to call it, and that I appreciate your participation in that. And Bob Warner, I know you're watching. I was wrong. I think it was a great idea to encourage people to share their voice, as they always should. I was just tired and wanted to get home to my kids and go to bed. So hopefully, we won't have to have this discussion again. But if we do, I am proud that there will be a large group of people who are in support of our city's mission and vision and values and commitment to continuous improvement.
Councilor Branning?
Thank you. That's actually a really good lead in to what I plan on saying. So to give you a little bit of insight behind the scenes, I told staff at the beginning of this or before all of this that I wasn't planning on saying much of anything. I feel like, you know, I knew what my decision was likely to be coming in. I did want to hear what the people say, but, you know, it felt fairly cut and dry to me on the agenda. Unfortunately, you know, I also sometimes need space for my feelings. This has been an unpleasant hour and a half for me. There have been some real highs and some lows along this way, but I appreciate everyone for coming out and speaking. But it hurts to hear people speaking out against affordable housing. And for the people who are out there saying we love affordable housing, but not here, that's what all opponents of affordable housing say. Every project is a great project somewhere else. Every project is a great project if it's delayed, if we change this, if the windows were a different orientation, other ridiculous claims that would make it better. But when you attack affordable housing, when you come up and say that a park wouldn't be vibrant if it has housing next to it, if you say this is a waste of our resources, if you say this is an inappropriate use of our time to build housing for our neighbors, say to you, you are wrong, and it is hurtful. It hurts me, and it hurts the workers of Livermore. It hurts our residents. It hurts my neighbors. It hurts my students. The way this ends is simple. The petitioners pull their complaints. They stop paying their lawyers, and they say, we're done. We want our neighbors there. Neighbors make good neighbors. I live in the cheapest place in Livermore you can buy a home. And you know what the most vibrant park in Livermore is? The most vibrant park in Livermore, I will tell you. It is the lawn between our units. I cannot go outside and not meet my neighbors and say hello, see them walking their dogs, see them out there having a picnic. I enjoy knowing the people I live with. I enjoy seeing them there. So when we talk about vibrancy, vibrancy requires people. We need our community to continue to grow, to support the workers of Livermore, to support our police, our fire, our restaurant workers, our janitors, everyone who comes and contributes to our town. I could not afford to live in almost any place in Livermore. It is too expensive for a teacher mid-career. I am almost at the salary cap. And I could not afford almost any place. I challenge all of the opponents of this. Tell me, what do you think a home in Livermore costs? What do you think a restaurant worker makes? Who do you think the people taking your trash out, do you think they can afford a home in Livermore? I'm so angry. I came in thinking, I'll let them talk. Let them say what they want. But it feels personal to me. And so I say to all the opponents of this housing, you tell us you want something somewhere else, something better. There is not a better project. This is the best project. When you say build it elsewhere, you're saying, don't build it. We don't want housing downtown. We do not want our neighbors there. We want a space reserved for the wealthy, reserved only for those privileged enough to already own a home in Livermore. They can come downtown. But my students, they're not welcome. Your restaurant workers are not welcome. The people who are providing the services that keep this city running, they're not welcome downtown. It's only those who are already here. And that angers me. So I know the petitioners are listening right now. You can end this. You can make Livermore a more welcoming and better community. You are the ones sowing hate and division in our community. You have the option to welcome our neighbors, to bring them in, to say that Livermore is a community that loves each other. And so I ask, I ask the petitioners, end this. The action that is in front of us today allows us to build housing for some. some, just a small, small portion of the people who are already here. The people who are here and cannot live a life that you have. You are comfortable in your homes. You are able to go back and say, "I think this should be different. I think it should be better." But the people who live in this housing don't have that option. They will be driving halfway across the state to return to their homes. They aren't here tonight to speak out. And so I implore you, please, let this move forward. It is time for Livermore to come together. I absolutely am supportive of this resolution in front of us. There are a few people who can end this now. Please, I stand with our workers. I stand with the community of Livermore. I stand with everyone who will benefit from this housing. I am ready to make a motion, but I will turn it over to the mayor first.
Thank you. Thank you very much, very profound. I think probably the best line that I heard tonight was, "Housing was the target, not the subject." And that's what Councilmember Branding has said so eloquently. It's unfortunate that the people that were against affordable housing, many of those have left. The people that are supporting the city's actions over the last near decade, they're still here. But the people that are trying to kill affordable housing have all left. Well, most of them have left. I see a few still here. But it's funny, one of the people that spoke tonight actually said to me that, "I don't want to run into low-income people when I'm in the downtown." It took my breath away. "I don't want to run into low-income people when I'm downtown." So in other words, it's all right for them to serve you your food in a restaurant. It's all right for them to teach your children in a classroom. But when the sun goes down, they need to leave town. Well, Livermore is not a sundowntown. We are not. I was struck by one of the comments, unfortunately, he's left. But he said, "Eight thousand people signed this. Let the people vote." Excuse me, but I remember in the summer of 2020, there was an initiative that was signed by over nine thousand people. And the City Council dutifully processed that initiative. And then the same people behind this referendum pulled that initiative off the ballot. And what was astonishing to me is not one person complained. Not one person. Out of, I think it was ninety-seven hundred people signed that initiative and not one person complained. And yet, the council put it on the ballot, listening to the public. And yet, the people that were behind it had the initiative pulled off the ballot. They denied those nine thousand signatories the right to vote. So we often hear, oh, there you go, who else heard? This is about squashing the voice of the people. It's interesting. We keep hearing about, well, "Do what the people ask." Listen to the people. It was interesting, we had a public hearing a while back on Chick-fil-A. And Yeah, you were there. I wasn't, fortunately. But Chick-fil-A come up and fifty percent of the people spoke in favor of it. Fifty percent of the people were against it. Okay, so in this circumstance where either side could legitimately say that you didn't listen to them, how do you make the decision? It's fifty-fifty. How do you make the decision? Well, for me, the metric is, it's what's in the best interests of my community. Now, tonight, if somebody said, "Listen to the people," well, as Vice Mayor Carling pointed out, we received fifty-four emails and letters of support. Tonight, we heard from twenty-eight people that spoke tonight that were in favor of adopting the resolution recommended by staff. That's eighty-two people supporting the staff recommendation. Thirteen spoke against it. So I got eighty-two to thirteen. And somebody says, "Well, you got to listen to the people. We don't want to squash the voice of the people." No, we're listening to the people. And we will continue to listen to the people. And it's what's in the best interest of the community. So the first of the three actions before the City Council this evening is to accept the certification of the referendum, which was circulated by Move Eden Housing. The referendum concerns one and one only legislative action taken by the council in 2022. The courts have stated that the construction of Veterans Park and only the park's construction is subject to the referendum. All the other actions of the City Council related to Eden Housing are not legislative and therefore cannot be challenged by a referendum. It is unfortunate that the proponents want to delay the construction of the park that would actually benefit our entire community. Even though processing the referendum means that the park cannot be constructed for one entire year, I am confident that a year from now, the city will proceed with the construction of the park, which was a core feature of the 2018 Downtown Plan, as the Vice Mayor pointed out. I've got drawings of Veterans Park from 2019. And that plan was supported by the Livermore community. So to summarize, the referendum specifically asks the council, and in the words of the referendum, "We ask that the legislative acts contained in said resolution be entirely repealed by the City Council." Those are the legislative acts, and we have heard over and over again what those legislative acts entail. So the most expeditious action to take tonight is to process the referendum, rescind the action, and avoid further delays. And then eventually, within a year, we can finally move ahead with the park. Is there anyone else that wishes to make any comments?
I'm ready to make a motion then.
Councilmember Branding, if you will please make the motion.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution accepting certification of the referendum, adopt a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2022-085, and adopt the companion resolution to ratify and affirm the agreement with Eden Housing, excluding the city's construction of Veterans Park.
I'll second. Motion made by Councilmember Branding, second by Vice Mayor Carling. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, and again, thank you all for coming out and speaking tonight. All of your comments were very important, very, we listened to all of them. Thank you for the ones that wrote emails. Thank you for the people that came in and actually spoke tonight. So with that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes four to one. Councilmember Barrientos opposing. Okay, with that, we have, we're going to go back to the open forum, which I moved to after matters initiated. Do we have any comments for the open forum?
Honorable Mayor, we do. David McWigan, followed by Greg Scott, followed by Carl Wentey.
Okay. I do not see Mr. McWigan. Mr. Scott, you're next up. You're the next speaker, yes. For the citizens forum, for the open forum.
I'm Greg Scott, and I'm not afraid to stand up to you. You know, Branding, Councilmember Branding, you're insulting. You know, you tell me, "I'm against affordable housing. I was in kindergarten for six years, nine months, and you tell me I'm against affordable housing." I attended the, your human, when you were on the Human Services Commission, I went and attended that, as you know, for two years and listened to your nonsense of your shell games with grant monies. I listened to this. Meanwhile, I was out there homeless and I watched homeless person after homeless person die. Okay? You tell me, how many homeless have died in the last year, last two years? You tell me their names, you know? You tell me, how, on this Eden Housing project, how much does each unit cost of a hundred and fourteen affordable, affordable housing units? Right? And how much are you going to spend on each one of those units for the homeless, the sixteen units? You know, you've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars. You have a surplus, that's great. You spend millions of dollars on that land out there, on and on and on. Wow, it's just amazing. And you tell me I'm against affordable housing. I can't think of a greater insult. If you want anger, I've got anger for you. This has been insane. You just, from Vineyard 2.0 to twenty million dollars there, and I didn't say where the money came from. It's the amount of money and the way you concentrate the money. You know, this is social justice here. Social justice, Eden Housing is social justice, right? Forty, forty percent of the payroll is sixteen or seventeen people. The executive director makes three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Housing, isn't it basically a social economic justice problem? No. No, not in your book, I guess. You know, it's ridiculous. And yeah, you cherry pick the emails, you cherry pick the attendance here. Well then, why not honor the initiative, the referendum that came to the city clerk? Why not honor that? Why not just do it to an open vote instead of cherry picking the set? Do it to the set of the whole community. You know, the way you go about it, but you don't, you just cherry pick certain modes and that's it.
The next speaker is Carl Wentey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you all for what you do. City staff, thank you all for what you do. It's got to be frustrating, challenging at times, but of the people, by the people, for the people, is when people show up. Those who put on a bulletproof vest, we salute you when you go to work to keep us safe. Those that fight fires, the first responders and the likes. This is a worthy fight. It's a worthy fight. It's a righteous fight. And I'll never forget the day where I was sitting at coffee with Mr. Ferrucci and we got elevated voices, Michael Ferrucci, our voice is elevated and we're going at it. I just was trying to understand the rationale, understand the hypocrisy, understand the like changing. Where are your principles? Where are your guiding principles? What do you believe in? And then at the end of it, we got elevated and we're there and he said, "We're slow growers. We want to slow everything." And I had a little coalescent moment. I was like, "Ah, right." And just like someone said, incredibly adept at throwing sand in the gears. That was a compliment. I don't know if I would want to receive that compliment. But like, this isn't a complete list, by no means. And I encourage welcome discourse. So I'll sit down with anybody, anybody, anytime. Doug Mann, let's sit down, Avast. Tom Ramos, shaking head, saying that, let's sit down. Ferrucci, you and I have, let's sit down. Gene, I'll sit down anytime. Jeff Katsky, let's sit down. Loretta, let's sit down. Joan, I'm here, I'm here, Joan, I know you're watching out there somewhere. We know who's funding this mess. You are NIMBY, no growers that are doing damage to our community. We should be mad. And Greg Scott, you are a walking contradiction. That's all I can say. I look forward to sitting down with you. I read the book, we go through, it is a structural problem. That is homeless. But you are a walking contradiction and I do not understand. But I would love to understand more, my brother. So you condemn others as your most fear in yourselves. And for those people in that group to say that like there's weasel words and backroom stuff happening, God, it's appalling. But we know who they are. I'll look y'all in the eyes, I walk back down the aisle, like, stop it. Like he said, you got mad at Evan's words? Like, you all have the power to stop this. And you're costing our generation money. You're costing the housing, you're having people move away. You know exactly what you're doing. You are slow growers. You try and stop everything from happening. NIMBY, we like solar, not here. We like affordable housing, not here. We like diversity in our community, just not here. Get it out in the open. Be better than that. You should be better than that.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay. We now come to committee reports, matters initiated. Councilmember Barrientos, any thing to report or initiate?
Well, it's gonna be hot, right? And I think a lot of people will leave in climate change, especially where the heat dome is right now. I drive by these bus stops and I see a lot of people cooking because they have no shelter there. It's just, I was wondering if we can put more shelters in some of these bus stops. We want people to take transit, but how many people are going to sit out there in the hundred degree weather and wait for the bus that may come on time? And I guess, or at least have water stations so that when we pick them up, we can put them in a bus and take them to the hospital once they get the stroke. So I was wondering if we can look at and maybe put some more shelters for some of the bus stops. Because I went down to scenic, there's like four bus stops there, not one has shelter. One has a tree and I could see him off under the tree waiting for the bus. But I was concerned about that, you know, a lot of people did die last year from the heat.
You're on Lafta, so that may be something that could be brought up at Lafta.
Actually, I have something from today, so.
Yeah.
I didn't plan on including this in my report out. I've been out of town, so I don't actually have much to report, but I'll use this opportunity to respond to Councilmember Barrientos. So Lafta is the one that actually manages, I believe, all of the bus stops in the city unless there's some that I don't know about. Good news is, Lafta did get some extra money in through a grant and through their capital improvement project, and they're going to be improving some of the stops to add additional shelter. The bad news to your point is, it is just generally a fairly expensive project for Lafta to do. They are working on improving stops. I don't know if, and that's all I actually have for my report out anyways. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Kick if you have additional to add.
I'm just wondering if the city manager, if you can help facilitate a report from Christie at Lafta so that we can all have that update on shelter shades, that would be lovely.
Absolutely, sir. The mayor is happy to do so and will include an update on critical projects.
Thank you. And since I'm already talking, I might as well tell you, I have nothing to say. Other than I do, I do appreciate the opportunity. And I cannot believe some of you are still here. That is like, I have to be here. So thank you for participating. And that's all. Thank you for being here and thank you for participating.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thanks. I had a couple of things I wanted to add to the list that I provided in the report. And one is I participated in a Quest event with some of the interns at the Bothwell. They had a Q and A with some leaders. So they're a bunch of interns working with Quest this summer. And they had several leaders from the community meet with them to answer their questions. And it was really an interesting opportunity to meet. They were all, I guess they were all high school kids. Most from Livermore, but some from Mountain House, Tracy, Dublin, and Pleasanton. So it was a good mix of students, isn't it? Nice conversation. Also, that was on the thirteenth. That evening, I went to the Travale Mayor's Conference. No, that was different. Sorry, I did that, but I'll get to it. Travale Conservancy are serving for the mayor. They celebrated thirty years. So we presented a proclamation from the mayor at that. On the fifteenth, Goodness Village, had a fundraiser, I will say that they On the 15th, Goodness Village had a fundraiser. I will say that they are moving along very well. They are using, they're designing a completely new center or opportunity for the residents there to have an outdoor kind of commercial kitchen as well as a gathering space. So they're really doing a nice job of moving forward there. They also have plans for adding several dozen more tiny homes. And I know they're working with staff to think about how that might move forward. There was also the city staff or, yeah, city staff or city had an ice cream social recently, which was very tasty. And like I said earlier, I subbed for the mayor at the, at the
Alameda County Mayor's Conference.
And so we actually had the
Fang Law.
Fang Law, who is
Fang Law, the
Assessor from Alameda County speak. He's really an interesting guy. And I certainly learned some stuff there about how things are assessed in the county. You don't want to get on the bad side of Fang Law. And then lastly, there, again, another worthy fundraiser was Wind Down in the Grove last Saturday, I guess, losing track of dates here. But again, that was out of Retslaff for LARPD and it was really a terrific event to support a very worthy cause and providing lots of opportunities for kids that may not have the resources to do some of the activities during the summer that LARPD sponsors. And so that was really a nice event and it was a wonderful time. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you for covering it, all those numerous events. Certainly appreciate that. There's a lot of stuff going on and thank you for covering. I had my report out, things that I did. Just again, the shout out on Wind Down in the Grove, that was, Evan Branding has nurtured that along. And that was something that he started on the foundation. It really is a remarkable program. And thank you for your dedication and passion that went into that. Also, at Innovation Tri-Valley, I attended the Hertz Effect. And this is celebrating the Hertz Scholars. And yes, that is John and Fanny Hertz from the automobile, the rent-a-cars. But they have this tremendous foundation which lifts up, there's no other word but brilliant. These are brilliant young people. And we currently have over 200 Hertz Scholars here in the Tri-Valley. By the way, Tri-Valley is a $50 billion a year GDP, so it's pretty amazing. But listening to a number of these Hertz Scholars talk about the work that they're doing, many of them are serial entrepreneurs. They've started many, many companies. Kim Boudil was there, who was a Hertz Scholar. And Jay Davis, one of the icons in our community, was the president of the foundation for a number of years. They do tremendous work to lift these students up and then unleash them on the world to do amazing things. So it was a great program and happy to attend. With that, seeing no business, further business before the city, nothing else I got to do?
I won't be here next meeting.
You will not be here on July 8th?
Yep.
Okay, so the rest of us will be. So this meeting will be adjourned. Oh, you won't be here?
We're having a party.
How will the city manage?
I have no idea.
I'll do my best. We'll keep it going. Okay, so some of us will be here, July 8th, 2024, 7:00 PM, right back here at the John, Dr. John Shirley Council Chamber. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Did you notice something?
Oh, it's
You and I have these.